Yeah.
Alrighty then. Good evening, I'd like to open the April 18th, 2017 meeting to order. At this time, I want to ask if anybody is taking the meeting?
Ray Ciume?
I am.
And Ally. Alrighty, we'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God indivisible and liberty and justice for all. Alright, on our agenda this evening, we have five, at 5:30 discuss financial policies with the town accountant. At 6 o'clock, discussion with superintendent and the, above the regional FY18 school budget. 6:30 discussion with FYAA and AJFC regarding the lease issue. At 6:45, we'll be meeting with the finance committee to review cultivation commission, council of aging and historical commission. At that point, we'll have weekly public discussion. We'll be looking at some letters from some various people in town. Also looking at, looking at the building fees, the water valve project, discussion with the Tuesday Club regarding the advanced and abatements for the month of March, January, February, and also discuss ambulance rates with the chief, talk to Chief Abbott about the fuel pump. Talk with the town temporary treasurer collector of other credit card machine, look at some reserve fund request, review minutes of the board selectmen's meetings, talk about how we want to set up our monthly meetings or whatever, and the town administrator's report. So at this time, I'd like to meet with the town accountant. Hi, how are you?
Sorry, this got put off till this time.
That's okay, you had more time to read all those pages.
Oh, yeah. So, did everybody have a chance to review everything? Does anybody have any questions, comments?
Do you want to go over a little bit, section by section, so you can just hit the bullet points for everybody, section by section?
Oh, okay.
Yep, that's fine, I agree.
Okay, so really, the first part was overall financial management principles, which basically sort of sets the stage for how the town wants to operate in terms of cash solvency, budgetary solvency, long-term solvency, and service level solvency. The idea is that you want to maintain some flexibility in your finances so that the town can react and respond to changes that come up or new service challenges without a lot of financial stress. So there were, in that section, there are six basic policy statements. Again, the first was talking about preparing a balanced budget annually. Also looking to not fund current expenditures at the expense of meeting future years expenses. Having ongoing operating costs funded by ongoing operating revenues, which, which seems to be pretty straightforward. Also maintaining the stabilization fund, which the town has, has done that. In addition, has a capital stabilization fund. And in terms of those percentages, the idea is anywhere from three to five percent of the operating budget is, is a good place to be. I had taken a look to see, you're, you're definitely above that actually right now, so that is a good thing. And then also taking a look at debt service. Ideally, you want to be able to take care of your debt within your operating budget. A lot of times you can't, and you need to do a debt exclusion. So it just kind of talks about that, and then it talks about your investment practices. So that's kind of like the overall objective there. I don't know if you have any comments on those specific things that were there? Or you kind of, overall, those were good, or? I mean, they're based on, on best practices that have been, been put forth.
So I, I have a couple of questions. The parts of that, that really have to do with collective bargaining, the clothing allowance, the payroll processes.
Oh, okay, I was just on this first.
Oh, alright, so you want to go step by step? Yep, that's perfect. I wasn't sure if you were done.
Oh, no, no, just for this first part, I knew you wanted to talk about that, you're okay with that?
I thought same thing, you know, that's perfect.
Yeah, no, that's what we wanted to, but it seemed like you were done, so, no, that's good.
Just for the first part.
Alright.
I know, settle in folks, we have a lot of things to do.
Yeah, you have a lot of pages.
Yeah. So, the first section basically is bill paying and payroll. Again, these, these policies have never, have sort of always been informally in place. I mean, this is, and the procedures that go along with them, this is kind of how we run, you know, certainly my department, on a, on a daily, weekly, yearly basis. This was just taking what had been created from my predecessors, as well as what was created from the town of Westport. They were kind of a model that we used, same audit firm, so they had had theirs reviewed by their audit firm. And then just some best practices. So, there's one for expenses for employees when they travel. There's one for the clothing allowance, one for how we process the invoices. And then we have encumbrances and accounts payable for the end of the year, prior year unpaid bills, the payroll process, wages while traveling and attending conferences or work-related functions. And then finally, interdepartmental appropriation transfers. And a little bit in there about the reserve fund transfers and how departments fill out those, those requests. I don't know if you want me to go into them in detail, or?
Well, we can go section by section. So the first section was about the lodging and the expenses, correct?
Uh, travel, yep, what are the expense and travel reimbursement?
So, I know in there you had a minimum of fifty dollars, or a maximum of fifty dollars per day. I thought that was a tad too low personally, for three meals.
Okay.
Also, if, if a conference starts at 7:00 AM in the morning, are you saying that they can't stay over the night before? That they have to travel on the day of the conference, because it says not to extend anything from the beginning or the end of there? So, I mean, I think, I think we have to give some sort of leeway if the conference starts at 7:00 AM in the morning, that they should be able to stay, especially if it's far away, that they should be able to stay over the night before. So, I'm hoping that there is some like leeway with that.
Well, again, it can be, this is just a suggested best practice. I mean, certainly if you want to offer that, it can be, it can be changed.
Right, okay.
Could be something to the effect of, with prior approval, so we know, the department head knows, okay, you're traveling to Springfield, and you're going to be there at seven, to at least his point, you're not going to leave at four in the morning. So that would be, they could get an authorization to stay overnight, versus just somebody who's traveling to Brockton, they're not going to necessarily stay overnight. The department head should have the leeway to approve or not approve whether the person stays overnight.
Okay.
And, again, to at least his point, again, mine, the fifty dollars a day for three meals, I would rather that just be, whatever the number is, just be a cap. Instead of pointing out three meals, because it may not be meals, they may say, well, you know, I bought the sandwich, that was a meal, but I also bought this, this, and this, some snacks for later on. It's fifty dollars a day, or whatever the number is, total expenditures, not just necessarily for three meals.
Okay. Do you have a number that you want to use?
Seventy-five, sixty or seventy-five, I thought was. Sixty.
Yeah, I mean, that's ten for breakfast, ten for lunch, and twenty-five for supper, that's, that's forty-five dollars plus tax tip.
And we can adjust it, it doesn't work.
Sixty dollars should be.
Yeah, it doesn't work any year, we can go back.
What we've seen is, a lot of times the conferences already include the meals, so typically, it's never really been an issue. But it's nice to have some type of limit in there, so, alright, so sixty? Okay, and we want to add some type of process for considering leaving earlier for a conference that's some distance away.
Yeah, I think once it's over, it's over, I mean, but I think that if something starts at 7:00 AM in the morning or 7:30, you know, I wouldn't want to be up at three or four getting ready to go to a conference, I have to stay there all day long, so.
Do you have like a, maybe like if it's more than fifty miles away, or any type, you know, kind of like?
Should be at the department head's discretion.
Yeah, I think so.
One more, no, one, two, that's going to be one, that's my question, I know we said those two.
Okay, so, the next part, I guess, the clothing allowance part. I just want to make sure that Joe Fair looks over not only the clothing allowance part of that, but also the payroll process part of that, just to make sure that we're not crossing any lines in the collective bargaining. I didn't see any red flags or anything, but I just want to make sure that we're not going against what the contract entails.
Okay, so you want this reviewed by council?
Yes.
Okay.
Currently, are they, are you giving them clothing allowance, taking taxes out of clothing allowance, or do they?
Depends on who you're talking about. For the police officers, they receive an, an actual allowance payment, and that does go through the payroll process, and they are taxed on that.
So they can spend that on anything, because it's, it's taxed, so.
Correct, but ultimately, they have to show up for work in uniforms.
Correct, but that's more of a stipend than it is, per se, only for uniforms, where, I know in the past, Charlie can speak to it better, it used to be, they had to go and submit a bill to get reimbursed.
Yes.
And that was taxed free because it was, was clothing.
It's a reimbursable plan where they submit the receipts for the amounts, right, so it was obviously changed at some point in their collective bargaining agreement.
So I can see a problem if you were going to enforce this against the police department, where they're going to say, no, this is already outside of our CBA. The CBA says that's, we're getting that as a stipend, where you're requiring them to resubmit forms and have reimbursement.
But they don't get reimbursement.
They don't currently, but if they follow this procedure, then they would, correct?
No.
Are they specifically exempted in here, that I missed?
Well, no, that's why Joe Fair would need to have, to go over that and make sure that he puts an exemption in there, or, or says, does, yeah.
I'm just reading the way she has it written here, I don't see an exemption from the police department, or I don't know if the fire's the same way.
They're not, I guess I'm saying, when an employee is authorized to incur expenses, they're not authorized to incur those expenses because they receive that stipend. But again, it, it probably makes sense to have council read through that and address your concerns.
But, Kim, the rest, rest of the employees would fall into this, correct?
Everybody's kind of got their own situation, so, for like highway and the transfer station folks, and the water department, and the building custodian, they actually get uniforms that are provided from a uniform rental company. So, they typically don't receive a reimbursement except for work boots. And they do submit a clothing request for work boots each year. That's part of their collective bargaining agreement. So, there's different scenario, it's kind of hard to get a one size fits everybody. So certainly, anything that's already within their collective bargaining agreements, that, that's, that's how it's treated. So, for most part, this relates to basically the work boots. There are, the building commissioner and the health agent, they get a clothing reimbursement. So they do provide receipts, and then they're reimbursed. So those are really what we're talking about. But certainly, you know, it makes sense.
Maybe just a line that says, unless otherwise contractually obligated in a CBA or a bargaining agreement or something to that effect.
Okay. Then next one was the invoice payment process. And again, this, this is typically what's expected. Obviously, we only want to pay for bills that have been approved and sign off, signed off by the department head for original invoices or receipts. And we make our payments directly to vendors, and just sort of outlines the process for doing that.
And I, and I think that it would be cool of us to have a department head meeting and review all of these with department heads. And also to make sure that department heads know that even though the board of selectmen signs off on a contract, that all contracts should be reviewed by town council before they even reach our desk for, to sign off on. You do have that in there.
Okay.
I saw it, so.
Okay.
No, no, you definitely have it in there, but I just want to make sure that all departments know that that's the way things work.
Okay.
Alrighty.
Okay, so we can certainly schedule a department head meeting.
Yeah, and I think you might want to even do it in two department heads, because I, two department head meetings, because I'm not sure you're going to get through all of this, or maybe send it out to them, have them review it, and then make sure, just like you did with us, come in with any questions or concerns that they might have. I also suggest that they sign off on having read it and having understood it. So then, they know that those are the policies and procedures that are in place right now, and they also have to, have to adhere to that as well. You guys good with that?
I'm good with that.
Sorry. Also, sorry guys, also, there's a part in here, and I can't remember exactly where it is, and it could be through, fluid throughout the whole thing. It, it speaks directly to a town administrator, but sometimes we either have a pot-time town administrator, or he may be gone. So, I think that just to cover both sides, it should be town administrator and/or the board of selectmen. And those were my issues, not my issues, but my recommendations.
I, I know she does have that in some, I'm just reading, she does have it, doesn't it?
There's a, a part, and I, I think, it was after the contracts and the vendors part of it. Something that had to be signed off by the town administrator, but. Anyway.
Okay, so I can just revisit all of that.
Do you have anything else?
No, the, the, the first one was, might be made in one, the clothing allowance in the CBA.
Yeah, okay. Charlie?
I'm good.
You're good?
Okay, um, okay, so that's the bill paying and payroll piece, okay. The next section was on fraud and internal controls. And this, the, the objective is basically to establish policies and procedures so that everyone's aware of their responsibility to identify any exposures to fraudulent activities and establishing controls and procedures to prevent such activity, to help guide staff as to what action they should take. Clear statement forbidding any illegal activity. And, there was fraud risk assessment. A lot of this is kind of driven by the auditors. Then there was a section on internal controls, and a section, I believe, on inventory control. I don't know if you had any specific comment on any of those sections. Pretty dry.
Yeah, so dry, that and, and, oh, the other stuff is like, okay.
Kim, just on procedure 1.8.
Oh, back here, okay.
The last sentence is probably, you could probably strike that, so nobody gets, is, the alternative procedure may not be used to transfer the risk of a light of school.
Oh, um, right, I mean, that, that's actually written within the statute, that's why that's there.
That answers my question, and we'll leave it like that.
Oh, okay, yeah.
I just was wondering why.
That's why that's there.
Okay, no problem.
Not that we're, we're going to have a light department where this is coming back, I think, I think that's, that's not going to happen. Okay, um, the next section, basically related to cash management, cash investments, cash reconciliation, receivables reconciliation. There are a bunch of other sections that relate to cash management that the treasurer will be working on. And again, the idea is to make sure that we do invest our cash to get the most benefit return on that. But obviously, there's, there's guidelines as to what you can invest in and that sort of thing. So, this kind of references what is allowable and what, what we would want to be doing. The cash reconciliation, basically, it's, it's a way to check between the treasurer's office and my office to make sure that what's, what's in the bank actually matches what's in the ledgers, which, which is, it happens every month. We, we have no issues, so this outlines that. And then we do the same thing with the receivables in terms of all of the tax receivables for property, tax personal, property, motor vehicles, that sort of thing. Any comments?
None, no.
That part was.
Well, just one quick comment on your reconciling your cash book.
Yep.
The ledger part, I think it's 4.4, it's a couple pages in.
Okay.
You actually lay out the procedure to, to go on and reconcile it. Currently, we using the VISA funding accounting?
Yes.
Do you want to include those actual procedures in this? Because that may change down the road, and these procedures may not be applicable if we no longer use, I mean, it says click reporting, click ledger.
Yeah.
Some of it is even refers to, Jessica's shared folders.
I know. This, this was actually drafted by Jeff when he was here. And I think maybe what we could consider doing would be to maybe put this sort of as an appendix or something like that.
Something that's easily updatable, you don't have to go in and change nuts and bolts of the section.
Yeah, so, I mean, I didn't really, all I kind of did was make his format the same as the others, but that's really what he put together. So certainly, we can pull some of that detailed stuff out and just put it separately. Alright, we're off to a good start, good. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Who's for thought, gentlemen, in the past, we had a financial management team, which was the treasurer, the accountant, the town administrator, the chair of the finance committee, a member of the board of selectmen, that kind of did all of this in a room, so everybody could know exactly how that all worked. And then we had them come in and explain it. So, I don't know, maybe in the future, we might want to think about putting that financial management team. Yeah, because it does, there are a lot of, like you guys, there's a lot of like little parts to it all, and it's hard to understand all together, so we might want to think about doing that in the future.
Sounds cool.
Alright, so a little bit before 6:00, so, I'll take public discussion. Anybody here for public discussion? No. Do you guys want to do anything from the agenda? We have five minutes.
I think we have a minute, I think, I have my agenda right there. Do we have any notes, please, and some stuff that you can cover? I'll give you, if you want to go right in order, we start right at? This is for the month of March, we have two, I believe we have two abatements. Two abatements for the month of March and for the month of?
We have March 2017, and then January, February, and March of 2016.
We have three abatements, three ambulance abatements. First ambulance abatement we have is from Comstock fiscal year 2017. It is for the month of March 2017, it's hereby made the aggregate amount of forty-five, forty-four thousand, five eighty-nine, fifty-two. I'll make a motion to re-sign the ambulance abatement for March, March 2017.
And do I have a second?
Second.
Alright, all those in favor, I say by aye?
Aye.
Aye.
The next abatement is, also an ambulance payment for the month of March 2017, is made by, for an aggregate amount of four thousand, three hundred and twenty-two dollars and ninety-seven cents. I'll make that as a motion to endorse.
All those in favor?
Aye. Thirdly, we have, mold accounts everywhere. In the system, it's a total of sixty-five thousand, seven ninety, twenty-five. It is for December 2015, that's seventeen thousand, four hundred and eighteen dollars and eleven cents. January 2016, twelve thousand, six hundred and one dollars, ninety-eight cents. For February 2016, for thirteen thousand, eight ninety, fifty-nine. And for March twenty, of 2016, twenty-one thousand, eight seventy-nine, fifty-seven. I make motion to endorse the total amount of sixty-five thousand, seven ninety, twenty-five.
Do you have a second, section? Alright, all those in favor?
Aye.
Alright, it is now, it's six o'clock. Alright, it's 6 o'clock, and we are going to meet with the superintendent of schools and the director of finance. If you'd like to come up, that would be great.
I'll introduce myself.
Charlie ZRSH, I'm going to introduce myself.
You want the board?
Yeah, we do have, I have five of my board members that are here, including vice chair. So I call a meeting of the Freetown Lake Ridge School Board, who haven't been posted here. And I'll just go through a quick roll call. We have the vice chair, Carolyn Gold, Terry Barrett, Steve Owen.
Here.
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 And Will Segway. Absent tonight, Mr. Clark, Mr. Kula Kovich, and Ms. Fox, the chair.
Alright, I just thought it would be a, a good idea for you to come in and speak to the board. We're meeting with other, other boards and, you know, committees and departments, and finding out what their wants, needs, and expectations are from the board of selectmen. So, like any other department, I think it would be a benefit to hear for all three of us, what is your opinion for?
Chico, absolutely. In fact, I'm, I'm thankful for the opportunity. This is really the first formal time we've had an opportunity to come in front of the select in, in, in Freetown through the regional FinCom. Obviously, Mr. Day's been part of that process, and actually, I think it's even maybe more appropriate, here we are in April, because we have a little bit more timely information to share with you tonight. So, I, I guess I'm going to give you a little short version, that's kind of the nice piece of April. We've kind of had some of this, what I provided you is a hard copy of a PowerPoint presentation with some updates. I'm going to refer to maybe five or six slides that I think are really significant, not that the others are not, some introductory, I'll skip over that piece. I certainly want to recognize in the front that Gene Fox, as typically the role is now, is the chairperson, and Carolyn Gold is the vice chair. That has changed through reorganization, we didn't change any composition of our, our current board, though, so consistency and continuity is there. So, I provided you five documents there, the PowerPoint presentation, which I'm going to spend some time on going through, and I've numbered the slides, so it's a little bit easier when I, I'll refer to a page and reference that. The bakery's here, obviously, to answer any questions. And then the, the other four documents are documents I believe that at least one or several of you have seen before, which is the projected assessment, what reductions would look like in relation to certainly what has been spearheaded on, by at least the board of selectmen of Lakeville in relation to what those reductions are, but significant, what the impact does on services and programs. So, I have those as, as kind of supplementary materials, and I'd like to just kind of reference a couple of slides here. But, Chico, please, at all three gentlemen.
It's your time right now, you have three minutes.
Please feel free to interrupt and, and ask a question or stop me along the way. So I guess the first point, other than the reorganization, that I'd want to reference is I'd ask you to go to page 12. And they're numbered, maybe you need to have the glasses to see, again, we kind of get them on two slides, it saves on pages, but the summary of cost page, so I'm going to refer- So I'm going to reference these next three slides, because I think they certainly highlight the big picture piece in relation to the budget proposed for FY '18. The FY '18 spending is thirty-seven million dollars, six hundred, and that's not a new figure. That's what I proposed in the beginning, that's been supported by the school committee. Seventeen is there listed, although I'm going to reference another slide, because I think there's been some significant additional costs in relation to special education that has an impact, and I think the board should at least be aware of that prior to making a determination. Five point nine percent increase, I think it's important to note, we added the per pupil expenditure piece. We are three oh three out of three hundred twenty-three school districts in the Commonwealth in relation to spending per pupil cost, and that's a state formula piece. You see the next slide, it's simply just kind of a comparison. I'd make reference to sixteen where it's a four percent increase. I recognize it's five point nine, but I'm going to come back to another slide that I think will significantly show that that five point nine is a little misleading, and I'll explain why in just a moment. And then the next page, which is page fourteen, and I've highlighted this a little bit before, whether it be through regional FinCom, the major cost increases, how do you run a level service budget where you're really not adding staff and seeing a slight increase in student enrollment? Well, here are the major factors. It's health insurance, as it is on the town side, it's salaries, it's contractual obligations, it's transportation, it's the process by which we have funded capital projects, both in Freetown and in Lakeville, that's the debt service, and special education costs, which I'm going to jump ahead, because this is a significant factor I would ask that the board consider as it moves towards supporting our budget at a future date. So I'm going to jump ahead a couple of slides. There's a lot of factual sheets there that I'd ask that you review, and maybe if we need to come back and answer questions, we certainly can do that. The next three slides that I want to talk to you begin on page twenty-four. So what has been, at least in my tenure and previous to that, is the fact that we have supported the operational budget with some of our E and D, right, which is the regional school district's free cash and savings account, just a comparison for town. And you can look at the numbers, and it's a bleak picture moving forward when you look at what the fund was for the regional school district in FY '13, '14, what it is currently in '17, which is six hundred, almost six hundred and sixty thousand dollars, what it is projected to be as we move forward with some additional costs, and ultimately, what it's going to look like under the current '18, where we're taking more from our E and D to fund the proposed FY '18 budget. Some significant, you know, when you look at sustainability, it's an obvious concern with the school committee and certainly for the regional school district relative to sustainability. If you look at the bottom slide, which is twenty-five, that's the one I referenced before. It's not enough to look at FY '17, what was budgeted and what the town supported, but you need to take a look at the subsequent additions to E and D to fund the '17 budget. The bottom line is the FY '17 budget wasn't sufficient enough to deal with our special needs population, the services, the number of students coming in relative to tuitions and staffing. And you can see to the tune of almost seven hundred thousand dollars, a little over seven hundred thousand dollars was added or will be added to the FY '17 budget. Then jump down to that, you look at the '17 revised budget, the current FY '18 budget proposed in front of you is really a three point eight percent increase when you look at actual cost by taking into account those two E and D things. Those were not present and available as we created this budget in November and December, but as we received significantly more costs in relation to special education, it will further exacerbate the gap between '17 and '18. The next two pages on twenty-six and twenty-seven highlight what happened a year ago, and I won't go into all the detail, but we made significant reductions in the school department when I made my initial budget proposal to meet the towns of Freetown and Lakeville in support of the school budget to get to that two point nine percent increase. We cut almost nine hundred, we cut over nine hundred thousand dollars, almost a million dollars, and you can see the services and staffing that we cut to have that budget supported. That was a year ago. Fast forward, so that's twenty-six and twenty-seven, you see numerous teaching positions, coaching positions, all those things were eliminated and are cut as we built our budget last year. Fast forward to this year, which is slide twenty-eight, the highlights for the budget that I'm presenting to you tonight is certainly what was the case in January and February as the school department faced, is we're looking at a level service budget. We have one additional position that we've added, and that position is a librarian at Freetown Elementary School, and that simply is an equity issue as it relates to Lakeville. So the concern as we come forward, and we've had some public meetings, and I'm here today to speak to the Freetown Board of Selectmen, is my concern is that at least one board of selectmen in one of the towns has talked about a million dollar reduction to the current proposed budget, not taking into account the two E and D numbers that are real numbers, our actual costs in special education, and the fact that that will take away, and I've given you the background information, eight to ten teaching positions, paraprofessional positions, it is absolutely going to devastate services and programs for kids, as it did a year ago, we cut almost a million dollars to get to that number. If another million dollars is reduced, and that's at least what was discussed, and I actually want to recognize and thank you for giving me the opportunity with reorganization in both departments, in both towns, to come forward and at least have the conversation with you tonight. Again, I want to give you all the scenarios, you see what the '18 budget proposal is that the school committee has voted on. I've shared with you some of the details behind what a half million dollar reduction would look like. There's been discussion about a million dollar reduction, that's all outlined there as to what that would be as it relates to devastation. And those are the subsequent slides. I've assessed the sheets pretty straightforward, that's the original agreement. And then you have the multiple scenarios that have been laid out, at least the board of selectmen, I was not part of the discussion, but at least was present when those scenarios were kind of played out. And that's the sheet that looks like this that was provided by the board of selectmen in Lakeville in relation to this. And I don't think there's any disputing of the numbers, just so everybody's clear on that, even though that's where it came from, we're not debating that those numbers are accurate or reflect what a million dollar reduction or a one point five million dollar or a five hundred thousand dollar reduction would look like. I think, you know, my greatest concern or fear is obviously, I appreciate the opportunity, because we hadn't had any conversation in relation to what we can, what the board would be willing to, what the capacity is in relation to the town of Freetown to support education. I wanted to share with you several of the scenarios that have been at least discussed publicly for the board of selectmen in Lakeville and what that would be from a devastating perspective. The other piece, I guess the April meeting helps, is we're ready to talk a little bit more about special education, and those are factors that don't necessarily, aren't necessarily crystal clear in November, in December, as we kind of build this budget. So I think I've, Mr. Baker, correct me if I'm wrong, I've tried to give you the, I didn't do the PowerPoint, it's thirty-one slides, you kind of got the six-slide piece. I mean, and I think the board has representative of both FinCom here, Mr. Wilkins has been present, Mr. Day has been present for the regional FinCom, so this is not necessarily new information. I've brought some new updated information in relation to that, so I've tried to kind of consolidate that and hopefully allow some time for kind of some give and take and conversation, questions you might have for us, and at the same time, you know, let you know kind of where the school committee's at. Well represented here tonight, during school vacation coming out, obviously. I think everybody here that speaks for the board is pleased for the opportunity, at least to come before you, as you have done with other departments, so thank you.
Charlie, questions?
Not right now. I'll have to take it in.
Take it in.
Yes.
Mr. Joe's?
I've been to the regional FinCom meeting, so some of this is older material, not older material, some of its material I've already seen before, some of it has some new numbers. Your price per pupil is a 2015 number. Do you have your price per pupil in '16 in which you're projecting, in '16, '17?
Yeah, we don't have that number, because we're using the state numbers on that, so it can be a little skewed, so that's the reason why it's a fifteen number, not sixteen, not a seventeen number. We could certainly give you a local number of what that would look like, but you wouldn't have comparison, so I, that's why we're using that number, even though it's clearly outdated.
One of the dangers is that there's about fifteen ways of doing the price per pupil. And, you know, while the state method may or may not be the best method, at least it's the consistent method. So the things they exclude in our district, they exclude in others, the things they count, they count in others. So at least you have a consistent method, and otherwise, there's a real danger when you try to compare if you're not using the same method.
The things they exclude are reimbursement, like fees, certain...
Well, they reimburse certain things like athletics. I mean, they don't count athletics, but they do that consistently. You know, they don't count certain costs for extracurricular things. They don't figure transportation in, because if you're comparing statewide, I mean, if you get a community like Chelsea that has four square miles, and you're comparing that with a big community like Plymouth that is just massive, you know, it makes it look like you're spending differently on education when you really just have to meet the transportation needs you have and don't have.
So we could give you a local cost, but we don't have that comparison, that's why we use the fifteen.
So all of these scenarios that you have, or that...
That were presented to us here.
That town in Lakeville handed us. So I know you have a scenario for the million dollar and deduction, but what are the losses for the other scenarios? Do you have that as a...
We have the million dollar and the half million dollars, so you have the one hundred, you have the million dollar and five hundred thousand. But what I, we didn't do, I guess I didn't quite have the stomach to put that one out, was the one point five.
The level one.
The piece here. But you do have scenarios three and four, so you actually have one, obviously, because that's the proposed budget, but you also have three and four, what we would have is two.
All right. Also, you keep talking about the increase in special education costs. And you know those numbers now, because you've also taken two hits from your E and D account to fund those special ed. What are you doing to lower the cost of your special ed as you move forward, so this doesn't consistently happen? And that's part, that's part one. And part two is, okay, you added those special education costs to your FY '17 and gave us a flat number, but that doesn't necessarily mean that that's going to be a flat, that 2018 budget that you're giving us and saying this is the budget, because you're probably more than likely going to have to add special education to the FY '18 number, which is also going to inflate that back up to that percentage.
We, well, we added it, as you said, to show the percentage increase, because a dollar's a dollar. What we did is we went back, and we've done this as recently as two weeks ago, we went back and looked at special ed as if it were the beginning for next year. And we looked at the students we knew who were aging out, because they'll be twenty-two and will not receive service. We looked at the ones that are probable graduations. So we tried to pull those out of the mix. We also looked at all the students that exist. So to the extent that the student is here now and is part of the cost that we added, they are included. Now, there is one issue that we, you know, we don't know who will either move out or who will move in. So in that sense, there's no contingency built in if we get ten more students or if ten students leave.
But to Fred's point, so the three hundred thousand dollars that we projected for '18, we feel comfortable at this time, minus that volatility where you have kids going in and out, it does address FY '18's concerns. The other piece, at least that you kind of spoke to, was a little more programmatic, is what are we doing to provide services to either, you know, streamline circumstances? The reality is, the vast majority of special education costs are tied up with staffing and/or tuitions, where we don't have programs in districts, so we have to then pay significant programs. And Fred reminded me today, as we drove over, the fact that it's not just about how many numbers of students, but the types of students and the services that are needed, it's important. It's not always necessarily that there's ten more special education students, but it's the type of services or programs that are significant, if you have an out-of-district placement of sixty or seventy thousand dollars. So to speak to that, what we've tried to do is take a look at, and we're not trying, we are doing, we're looking at a couple of programs where we have multiple students with similar types of needs that we are now paying out-of-district tuitions, whether it be through the collaborative or all the areas, and can we in fact bring those back in? Now, keep in mind, when you do that, you have to add staff. So that's another tough argument, so often to explain to a town, to say, yeah, so we're defraying tuitions, but in order to bring those kids back with significant needs, I mean, most of the students that we're talking about that are receiving these out-of-tuition either have medical concerns, either have a nurse, have a one-to-one paraprofessional, and are significant costs. All the things we should be doing, right? What community isn't going to support that? If my children are doing the same thing. But this is a significant cost, and it hasn't necessarily been a public conversation. And we're talking about almost an eight out of a thirty-seven million dollar budget proposal, about eight million dollars of special education costs when they're seventeen percent of our population. It's a significant cost, and it's a significant cost that often goes up after a budget, as is the example seventeen is in place. Tough to forecast, some districts will build in contingencies, and Fred referenced that. There isn't any contingency left. This is my third year here as superintendent, and we have really streamlined that piece where we were able to, and I think that's the reason why, I don't think, I know it's the reason why, we've got to go back to E and D. In other years where we maybe had some significant savings in energy and savings, and we saw a little bit higher numbers, we've been trimming those numbers, right? So this year, when we need that funding, it's not there, we're going back, I don't think anybody here would argue, you know, it's not a good practice out of your bank account at home to be paying for your bills with your savings account, which is the reality of what's taking place long term. But we're going to, we are projecting to do that, but, you know, to speak to that, I think we've been very aggressive in trying to create some programs and capacity and try to bring some, we brought some collaborative, we're trying to use and take advantage of space, for example. So we've brought both reeds and South Coast back on site, so instead of having students go to a West Bridgewater or a circumstance, they can be housed in one of our neighborhood schools. It's something we're going to continue to explore, we're really trying to put a little more emphasis at the secondary level, at least to respond to that, to see if we can maybe build a little bit more capacity and programs, so those students who typically, as you go up higher in grade level, will now are costing a little bit more. Again, we're providing education for these kids beyond twenty-two and transition out of high school, that's the requirement. So it's a significant cost. If you backed out that cost from our percentage increase, if you took it, so you took out some of the extremes, right? You take health insurance, special education, and capital, and you clumped them in one category, you'd be looking at our contractual obligations, and you'd see it's less than a million dollar increase over a thirty-seven million dollar budget. Not a reasonable request, and again, we're here tonight not to say that we're not open to the conversation, I think this, tonight, is an opportunity to have that dialogue. We're doing the same thing in Lakeville, the Lakeville, FinCom has requested to meet with us individually to talk about our budget. We're scheduled to meet with them on May fourth, it's a Thursday, so that's going to be a unique circumstance, as opposed to being given an arbitrary number. And I think likewise, you folks are trying to do the same thing, which is take a look at all your department's capacity and make a determination as to what the assessment looks like. We're just trying to give you some detailed explanation as to why some of the costs continue to rise, and some of the things we're trying to do to bring in some increased revenue. We're pretty aggressive in relation to revenue, whether it be school choice, bringing students in, seeking grants, and trying to reduce that cost, knowing obviously that we need to be fiscally conservative.
All right. Anybody else?
Just a quick question on energy costs. You wrote energy costs. Are you fixing your energy costs in this budget? Are you buying ahead? Are you buying hedge or are you just buying volatile market prices?
No, we basically don't have money to buy head, first of all. And we're basically trying to implement some energy savings measures, but again, we have limited funds to do that. But, you know, we have done some things with lighting, you know, we've done some things with other mechanical devices, motors, and things like that, to try to save on some of our energy use.
Bob, are you specifically talking about, like, fuel though, specifically what the purchase is?
Fuel, electricity, yeah. Fuel is one piece that's more volatile than...
Yeah, no, we are purchasing basically based on the tank, the lower tank car price in Boston or Providence. We did it, we just did it, though, and have a differential in there.
So that's a set number, though, you're not open to market volatility?
Well, it's a set number in terms of the differential, but it's, we are open to market volatility, because the tank car price varies week by week and day by day.
Pretty competitive nature, we need to see point of view.
We got about seven bids, which is good.
That's good. That's it. Transportation reimbursement and circuit breaker, have you seen those fluctuate? Are they staying, percent-wise, staying close to the same?
There, and I mean, there's a couple of different budget proposals... There, I mean, there's a couple of different budget proposals, as you know, out there. We are pegging the budget as if we're going to get the same levels of reimbursement. Sometimes it's a little bit deceptive because when they talk about it on the state level, they talk about 72%, but they're talking about 72% of this year's, not of next year's. So, you know, sometimes they pass it and they give a number, and then, you know, as all of the state appropriations are subject to, you know, they're subject to appropriation, all of the state numbers, so they don't fund it at that level. But we're basically holding on transportation. Circuit breaker, we hope to be level funded. Circuit breaker is a little more individual though because it's actually based on the actual cost for the actual kids. So since our total cost is going up for special ed tuitions, and while they're not all funded evenly, we feel we'll at least do as well as we've done this.
This was the, as I was preparing for the knowing I was coming here Tuesday, I mean, this was my morning paper. It's the headline you read, "School Aid Falling Short, Most Areas, Districts." I mean, Free Town, Lakeville, and Robit, Thine Robit. It's a flawed formula as we know. And so we certainly could have started tonight by saying that the state's not stepping up in relation to some of those pieces, but we also know that that's really not a short-term solution to our, to our issue. Continues to be a problem elsewhere. They are, there is some movement in relation to changing that. It looks like our Chapter 78 is going up slightly based on the recent proposed, but obviously that can change as well. Again, we're not getting the whole regional transportation that should be, we should be receiving. That has been promised to all the districts that made that determination that this, that this town did six years ago.
Is that it? All right. So I know that the board has meetings with other departments right now, and we're still working with those numbers. I know that Mr. Powderlee reached out to me and he was eager to get a number from us, but at this point, we haven't, we're still meeting with departments. We still have meetings with our FinCom that we want to just finalize some of our department numbers and know what is affordable. We also have told all of our departments that there's a difference between needs and wants, and that your budget should be based on what you really need, not necessarily what you really want. So just, that's just a nice way of saying, keep that in mind.
Absolutely.
Also, again, Mr. Powderlee wanted to have a number by May for us. Not sure we're going to reach that, that goal or timeline. I think it's, even though we have a great working relationship with them, we need to take care of our departments and our towns before we go out and meet with Lakeville. And we need to determine, we have not had that conversation, the three of us, about school budgets or any of the other budgets. So that's why I thought it would be a good time for you to come in, at least do your presentation, so everybody has the right facts.
You have all the updated information. Both Mr. Baker and I would be happy to come back at a future meeting date, whether it be with FinCom or whether it be through the regional or to the board directly if there are specific questions in relation to the package or information we provided.
Or if you have any questions, we're going to go over and call either one of us.
All right. Thank you so much.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks very much.
Want to fight something else while I'm waiting?
Why don't you approve the request by the Tuesday Club?
We have a request from the Tuesday Club dated April 11th, 2017, in association with Free Town Cultural Council. We'll be holding the annual strawberry festival. The date this year will be June 18th, 2017. From 3:00 AM, 3:00 AM, yeah, 11-
I'm just going to make sure we make a lot of noise so you can hear us at 3:00 AM.
From 11:00 AM to 4:00 PM at the Village Bandstand. As always, we have a police officer on duty. I'm reading from the letter. As always, they have a police officer on duty for traffic control and pedestrian crossing. We're looking forward to the bar granting us permission to use the Village Bandstand for our very popular festival. As you may know, this event will help, is help, is held to provide scholarships for the Free Town students. I will make a motion to approve the Tuesday Club with the Free Town Cultural Council for June 18th, 2017, from 11:00 AM to 4:00 PM at the Village Bandstand.
Got a second? All those in the camera? Hi. It is now 6:30, and we'll be meeting with FYAA, FYAA, and the AJFC regarding the lease. If you guys want to come down.
That's the DOT with me.
We have the AJFC.
Where's the FYAA?
Yeah, I can't tell you.
FYI. Then I can get that.
Are they coming? Yeah, they were. All right. We might just have to hold on you then.
You'll wait?
Yeah, we'll wait. I don't want to knock them out in case there's any questions.
Okay.
All right. It should be the letter for the trash. No, he can't leave. That's going to take a lot of time. Nice try though. Gary wants to leave.
Yeah, he has.
Do you have that letter?
I have.
Do you want to copy that? I have a copy.
Oh, thanks. All right. So recently, you received a letter. I'm writing, "As a concerned citizen and also as an elected official of ASONA, I reside at Six Narrows Road. I currently serve on the Board of Assessors and have served on various other committees for the past 30 years. I am disappointed in the state of our roadways along South Main Street corridor. The amount of trash and debris is unacceptable and is easily recognized as truckers slash employees throwaways. These include various beverage cups, fast food bags, and the obvious water bottles holding yellow liquid, which we all know that water is not yellow. I want to voice my concern and request that the town enforce a no littering, no littering along all of the roadways. We should require any business that produces increased traffic from inside and outside vendors' employees right down to fast food restaurants with their throwaway containers to police and recognize this problem and be a good neighbor by monitoring the roadways to and from their establishments. I would also like to thank the Board of Selectment and the Board of Health to consider requiring all food sold in takeaway containers to be biodegradable as many communities have already started to do. As a town resident, when I have an issue with trash that is generated from my home, if it is distributed throughout the neighborhood unexpectedly, I collect and take responsibility for it all. I would never leave my neighbors with trash in their cars and along their roadways as a result of my negligence. I would hope that the businesses in this town that benefit from our patronage would also consider Free Town their home and act responsibly as well. If they are not capable of noticing this on their own, then as a town, we need to make sure that they're aware of the issues and hold them to the standard we have of keeping our community clean. Sincerely, Suzanne Pocker." Yeah, I have to say, it's not only on the South Main Street corridor, Chipaway Road, Chase Road, some of, some of those places are just, it's awful. I think with the increased truck traffic, I, I think that that's, they don't live here. They, they don't here like we here. And I think that it's, it's an issue.
What, what kind of audit, audience do we have in town for littering?
Town ordinance?
I mean, is there a fine?
State, well, state.
There is a fine. There is a fine. I know that this came up before, and I know that there is a fine. And I'm not sure if there are any signs.
There are no signs that I, I know of, but I, I think that's really true. People eat in their cars and throw it up, throw things out. And we've had trucks for years, but we have an excess now. And they park, and where they park, on South Main, on the state road.
I know Stop and Shop's been open to sending crews out and picking up trash that is generated from their trucks. And maybe if we could have Jack make a phone call down to Stop and Shop.
They're not the big culprits because it's other trucks that have parked.
All the ones that park on the state road, I mean, on the state pit road.
Oh, that's the-
That trash is knee-deep over there now.
Oh, it's awful.
You just see them. If you're visiting one of the businesses, you can see them sitting there, and it just goes out the window.
What do they have for trash bins for the Dunkin' Donuts that area, the Circle K and that area? Do they have, do they have ample trash bins?
All the hills are trash piled all in front of them.
There are no trash bins at the one nearest to the highway.
The, in the Circle K one? That's the one I was thinking about, the one to your point.
They have them outside.
I didn't think so.
No. And then they park on that state road, and they, I've been having my hair cut, so I see them sitting there throwing out the window.
And I've heard that Circle K is now open 24 hours. I don't know if that's true or not, but I'm not up that time of night, but I've heard that they're running 24 hours.
And we maybe need to notify companies that have those trucks.
Well, I think the first-
That they, they need, they need to provide trash at their, at their sites and when they drive.
Well, I think an establishment like Circle K or Harry's or, and I'm not, I'm not saying it's one or the other, needs to police their area, and they need to make sure that, that they clean it up. That's number one. So I think that we need to send or have Jack send a letter to, you know, all of those companies over there, another letter to Stop and Shop as well. But I think that we need to have a massive cleanup. And there's no one in our departments that have the capability or the time to take away from their own jobs to do cleanup in town.
Well, the highway spent a week cleaning up on Slappy Road, and Chucky spent a lot of time cleaning up a truck. And it's, it's not the truckers, it's people.
It's other people too.
Throwing garbage. There's baby diapers into the soil, and bags, there's bags full of those, you know, if you buy-
Trash to get things.
Yeah, tickets, scratch tickets.
Yeah.
All over.
So when you take away, you know, he's doing cleanup instead of taking care of the roads-
I am.
-the way that they should be done. So I know that in the past, we have had-
The prisoners, we have the prisoners and the-
Hey, Jack, you made a phone call to Sheriff Hodges and I'm waiting for a return call.
I mean, that helps, but we need to enforce that if you're going to use a drive-through, I mean, they, there needs to be something, and that's the way of, in the country, not just here, that if drive-throughs are used, then there needs to be something. People, I've been in front of a Harry's early in the morning, and people drive through that parking lot and throw their stuff out in our parking lot and go to Dunkin' Donuts right on the ground, you know, just, that's just how it is.
And are they emptying their barrels in enough time or are they letting them, you know, overflow before they decide to change them? And, you know, so I think that that, in that letter, we can address those issues.
Most of them have barrels at the, at the drive-throughs, but not providing barrels for their customers.
Then we need to at least start there.
Yeah, we look at that as a condition of their license.
But how about an enforcement? I mean, if someone sees-
Carlton's going to be in later, so I think that we'll ask him at the same time while he's in, if he can address that by putting some of those signs up there. And I think that also, putting a sign up is one thing, but enforcing the sign needs to take place so people get the message.
I think, a couple of things we should be doing. We should be sending letters to like Circle K because that's a customer.
Yep.
The Dunkin' Donuts, the other Dunkin' Donuts, it's clean.
It is clean.
The other thing is the State Department of Transportation has a, has a responsibility to clean up at, at the ramps. Because when you're coming down the ramp, that's what you see. You see the garbage. And between Circle K and the State Department of Transportation, they should clean it up. Once you clean it up, it's not that hard to keep it clean. But they let it go for years, actually. And the other thing is Stop and Shop along their property is quite a, there's significant litter. I think they should be able to out and police their, their area up. And that would solve a lot of the problems.
In that area, but then we also have, you know, the other areas in town.
Yeah, the rest of it's a mess. Unless the South Main Street down there is a mess though.
On that state road, they're not supposed to be parking on that road anyhow. That was the whole thing before with the state pit, so no one's telling us the move.
Steve's talking about the side access for the whole of Circle K. And that's, to Charlie's point, that is still DOT land, I mean, state land, and they should be, they should reclaim land too. But I think a lot of that blows over from the neighboring property.
All right. So let's start off with the letters. All right. To all those, I don't want to, I don't want to just leave anybody out. Let's send one to everybody, okay?
Yeah.
And then, then also to DOT. And we'll start from there. If you don't hear back from the sheriff, let's just tell Ally and I'll give him a call as well. And we can go from there. All right? Sounds like a plan.
Time limit?
Let's have an update at our next meeting. Okay. Guys? You all set now?
Yeah.
No, 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 sorry.
Free Town, you've asked what it is.
She's not a guy. She's with me.
Andy, come on up.
Andy. I don't, I don't call Aunt Leo a guy.
Well, they weren't here a minute ago.
Hello. How are you?
Doing good. How are you?
All right.
How are you doing? Good, how are you?
Okay, so we have questions about whether this had to be, a new lease had to be done over again, if we could just, you know, go from there. We had town council look it over. We felt there were some, a little bit of changes. And I don't know if you've got, if you've had a chance to look it over as well?
Yes.
Yes, okay. The board, have you looked it over?
Yeah.
Does everybody, you have any questions or concerns?
I have, I have-
Go ahead.
I have concerns. One of the things to begin with, my concern is to extend this agreement for another 11 years. I think it was a very bad idea to start with a 20-year to begin with. One, one reason is because there's a turnover, as we see. The organization that, that we agreed with is defunct. It's a whole new organization. So I have an issue with the time. There was some discussion, I read the, not being here, but I read the minutes, that there was some discussion about a year to year. I don't know if I'd go year to year, but I think we need to have a much shorter time and maybe with a rollover, like you say, a three-year agreement. After two years, everything's good. Roll it over another two years. That's one thing. Another thing that I have a problem with is the insurance. If we're going to be playing football and cheerleading, it's a lot different than baseball and softball. And the original agreement had a million-dollar, oh, policy. That was seven, nine years ago, actually. Not the same million dollars now. So I'd like to see, do you have, what's, what is the insurance that the-
That'd be on my end of it, well, our end of it.
Yeah, okay.
I have a copy of the policy here. I'm pretty sure it's what you just said, a million dollars.
It was our policy. We just reflect the amendments that was sent to us by email.
It's a million, 250,000.
Have you ever put them on file, the policies on file with the, with the select-
No, we have not done a good job of, you know, when there's turnover in the board, you know, you're not, you come on board for a youth association, you're not thinking lease and landlord, and you've done a very poor job of that. So this is brought to light. You know, since then, I've read the lease for the first time. And, you know, it says, when you read it, you're like, of course, but you just don't think of that when you come on. So we've done a poor job of that. But, but, you know, we've always had good insurance in place. And I think there's just been a carryover from the original policies that were in place, and that's always been fine. But going forward, also too, on the, did you read the amended amendments?
I did.
Yeah, so they want, the amendment says to extend the term out to 28, but it has to be renewed every year. Yeah, so they want, the amendment says to extend the term out to two, to twenty-eight, but it has to be renewed every year. So every, every year, we have to write a letter requesting that the lease be renewed. So that's how, that's how it's written in the amendment. And that would also serve, you know, the function of making sure that everything is up to where it should be yearly.
Another issue I did have, the sub.
This is, did you wanna see our policy too, this is a football one.
Okay.
I think you guys have a copy also, but.
Would this policy kick in with that policy, or is, do you know if it's an independent?
These are independent, totally separate.
My, my only concern is if there was something really bad that happened, then, you know, the, the deep pockets and that, you guys, even though you have million dollar policies, you could be talking ten, twenty million dollars, if somebody really was to get hurt. Who are they gonna come back to the town, you know, where they went with the deep pockets, so to speak. But, so that's, that's why, that's one of my concerns, just in, just in case. Scotty, you know, if something bad was to happen, the first thing they gotta go and attack to get us is, oh, there's some type of field condition. And that's something that, you know, we really, you know, we're leaving the control to you people, and that's, that's another concern. Do you have a plan for the, for the field or, my, my understanding, I didn't, I wasn't in on the first conversation, so do you have?
All the stuff, I don't know if, I don't know if any of it, if, if anybody still has it. I did give everything, all these were given, the plan, the plot plan, everything was given, everything was, I don't know if, if you've seen it.
No, I didn't.
I do have a copy of it.
Are you using this field in Freetown?
Yeah.
Sorry about the roll up there.
No problem.
Any questions?
Yeah, something's happened.
Now, on the insurance stuff, I mean, this is the same stuff we've had for years, like at Ted Williams, we used to play Ted Williams. Do you have any, I mean, what do you?
No, I just, I just wanna make sure that you had.
And we've never had an issue over all the years we've been, the organization and stuff, we've never had anybody.
Now, are you, are you part of a, like, the baseball is Cal Ripken, correct? Does Cal Ripken Baseball have a insurance, like, do you have to prove to them that you have insurance of?
Yeah, you have to charter every year, and you have to supply proof of insurance, that gets reviewed, that's the biggest part of the charter, actually, these days.
We're, we're part of the OCYF, our big program for football, which is the same thing, you have to, you know, have all that stuff in order to be part of it.
I'm just a little hesitant on the time. This is, you know, let's face it, we gotta be, we gotta revisit this. I mean, you're not gonna be there forever, you're not gonna probably be involved in it for twenty years or a while, whatever long it lasts.
I don't know.
I think we'll be lucky.
I've been in the football league thirteen years.
And we are gonna revisit annually, so if there's changes, we can make changes annually. Some of the things, if you're, are you? Some of the things I'd like to see, you could probably put it in subsection A, section four, subsection A. Actually, section nine entitled insurance, town should be indemnified by both policies. We should also be held harmless, although I wanna see the language that we're indemnified, held harmless, and I also want it to be named additionally insured, the town should be named additionally insured on your policy.
Freetown League goes on, I mean, Freetown is on.
Should be a subsection right down bottom of the thing.
Yeah.
Additionally, naming the town specifically additionally insured, like this one is.
We have Town of Freetown on us, and we also have FLAA on, on, on.
Okay, I'd like to see it in the contract too.
Okay.
So are you gonna let town council know that? He's the one that.
Yeah, we'll.
Yeah, we'll just, we'll just add, it's nothing major, that's just normal, you're in business, it's just normal, that's, we just don't wanna be, to Charlie's point.
You guys don't wanna be held responsible for anything.
Not that, not, we're not incurring anything, we don't wanna be held responsible for. Also, if any certificates, insurance pass, that we have to be notified, so if you don't pay the premium for whatever reason or whatever, the town's notified when it happens. Within so many, I think it's within five business days, it's normal.
Could you give us a copy of your insurance every year?
Yeah, I think that would be standard with the renewal, we're supposed to do it now.
It's supposed to do it now. So this all came up because, you're right, Andy, I think on both sides, the town and FYAA kinda said things were working. There was no really need to delve into it until the sublease came up. And then I think that myself and Robbie and Charlie now, when you read the lease.
You're not supposed to sublease.
Not, eh, right, right with that big red flag right there, that's number one. Number two is, is that there is turnover, there's new presidents every year or every other year, and, and I wanna make sure that they read the lease and sign off on reading the lease every year, so they know what the expectations are from the Board of Selectmen and from the Town of Freetown. And, and there's no, there's no hidden, you know, we're not hiding anything from you, and you're not hiding anything from us. So I mean, I'm comfortable with the length of years if we get that every year, because you're not gonna go out and put in a new stand or upgrade the fields if you know that in next year you could be out, okay? So I think that it benefits both of us at the same time by having a long, a longer lease. Only if the conditions are met every year, alright? The thing I did write down also is that I wanna, I wanna sign off every year from whoever's in charge. Your, the president from your league, the president from your.
I'm not, but, yes, yeah, yeah, I know what you're saying.
I think that the insurance certificates need to be attached to this. I think that there should be proper protection for the, from, for the town, and again, hold harmless, hold the town harmless. So I think that if we saw those things in here, I would be happy.
I know we do, we still practice at Ted Williams and stuff, they're very strict, we, every year, it has to be given updated insurance. I mean, so we're used to that, so that's not gonna be an issue on our end.
Right, because.
Giving you guys all that stuff.
The upkeep of the fields is on you, right? So if there's a rut or there's a hole or something, that's, that's on them.
It's on us, yeah.
And this town is held harmless in that position, so we just wanna make sure that that's in there. Alright, can I have a motion to add those things to this, and then, I don't know if you wanna assign a contingent upon those changes or if you wanna wait to look at it all over again?
Look at it all over, then have town council go over and just reinforce.
Well, this came from town council, so.
Right, like, there's a couple of changes, well, you wanna add the insurance.
I wanna make sure, yeah, that things that are in there are, are in there.
I have no.
I mean, the things that we added, we want to make sure that they're in there.
I have no problem them continuing on with what they've been doing until we can sign the agreement that is.
Well, right now we're outside of contract, 'cause Freetown Youth Athletic Association no longer exists.
Right.
It's now Freetown Lakeville Athletic, Youth Athletic Association, so.
How long ago did that happen?
A year, yeah, a year. I remember opening day last year and it was already, already.
It was already that, yeah.
So I'll, I'll make a motion to endorse with after review of the changes as made by town council.
Alright, so let's, hold harmless?
Hold harmless, indemnify, and add additionally insured to the town, if the town is additionally insured.
Right, and a sign up every year.
Annual, annual.
Annual assign.
So, so the old harmless will be added to the lease?
To the lease.
'Cause I don't, they won't put that on the certificate.
It'll be in the lease.
It'll be in the lease, okay.
Okay.
That's the, that's for the attorneys, this is the actual, the insurance company. The additionally insured though does go, and you already have it on.
Yeah, absolutely.
It's just to maintain it.
But there's no way I'd get them to put that language in.
Alright, I have a motion in a second with those changes, all those in favor?
Alright.
Alright.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
I just had a question on the permits. We're still waiting on the permit to be signed for the electric and for the, the shed getting built. Is that, can that stuff be signed yet, or that still has to be waited for all this other paperwork to be done, or?
The turnaround in there should be really quick.
Okay.
Let me touch these with Mark, which tomorrow, and find out how fast he can go. Hopefully, maybe by the end of the week.
Okay.
And then you'll be able to start on Monday.
We, we just made the motion to endorse it, and as soon as it's, it's changed, we can start enough to revote and, well.
Okay, no more, none of the meeting enough, right now.
Right. Yep, no, no, you're all done.
And then do you guys, I, I already, I know I gave Jack, I think it was, this insurance information, do you want me to give it to you guys now? This is just copies that I have, do you want them, so you can have them on file?
I think you should submit it with the, the signed copy.
Yeah, when, when you sign this, bring that in, and we're gonna attach everything to here, okay?
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Now, play ball?
Thanks again.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Meet with the Finance Committee to review Conservation Commission, Cultural Council on Aging, and Historical Commission. You guys all set? Why don't you have papers? Where are your papers?
What papers?
What do you mean, what papers? You all got your papers, you, you're, do they, you gotta need, they all have packages. For the budgets? Yeah.
I'm sure I got the full budget.
Alright, well.
Let's call a meeting in order.
Sure.
Are we gonna review the full budget?
No, just the three, Council on Aging, let, let's just, because there's been, you know, some, I guess, questions and angst. Even though we're meeting with all of these departments, we have not voted on anything. And I think that once we're, from the perspective here, is that once we're done going, reviewing everything, then we really should, that's when the real work is gonna start. We should look over everything, decide, are we gonna give this extra person, are we gonna give them this money, da, 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 da? And then we can know exactly where we are. I think that, obviously, it has to take place at a working meeting with the Finance Committee and the Board of Selectmen. But we have not voted on anything yet.
And what are we doing tonight?
Tonight, we're doing Conservation Commission, Council on Aging, and Historical Commission. Uh, let's start with Historical Commission. The ladies and the gentlemen. The guy? The guy, the man.
Him. Now, what number is that?
Gonna be six, six, six? Six ninety-one.
Six ninety-one. Okay, what's changed? So, so right now, in front of us, we have that, the request is five hundred plus thirty-two fifty for the restore and repair windows in the, in the village school. Okay.
Five hundred is staggering.
Okay, okay.
We normally, we have never asked for more than five hundred dollars as far as in our budget. However, we've made a commitment to save, restore these schoolhouses. And we've obtained grants and matching funds from the town and additional funds from the town, and everyone's been very supportive. It was leaking, it was falling apart, and that money ensured that we were able to put new trusses, new roof, improve the, make improvements to the cupola, save it, and the stairs. And I mean, this is what we were looking at prior to the use of that money, and I mean, in the cupola and this is. And so we've made it watertight, and we've also, on the stairway, I mean, no one could access the building. We have also had repairs to many of the beams, which had to be redone inside the building because of the, like, thirty years of leaks, and also to the foundation, and so we, there still are some issues. And we have been trying to chip away at this, so that when the town comes for it to be utilized, on whatever manner the town decides to use it, because there's a good sound building, is the windows. And the windows are a problem, some of the windows are leaking, some are boarded up. And as you drive through the center of town, it's not a good commentary to see a boarded up public building next to our town hall. So we're looking at starting on the windows. And we've had several people come in to give us prices, and you know, it's on the National Register, there's, there are preservation restrictions on that building, and so we are looking to restore the windows that are there. And so we've been working with several people, and there is a person that has been doing work on the town hall with a building inspector, and he has actually given us the best estimate. So when we first put in for three thousand dollars additional, that was to do about, what did we say, about?
Well, six hundred a window.
We have gotten a price for four hundred dollars a window.
If we do them all, we can get it for four hundred as a package. So if we did all the windows, we would save sixty-one hundred dollars, at four hundred dollars a window, you know?
See that yet? See that?
There are thirty-one windows.
There are thirty-one, okay, that's.
Yeah, there are thirty-one, okay.
So originally, the guy was gonna charge us six hundred a window, so we were talking about doing six. But as we pursued this, we found this gentleman who's worked at the town hall already, and he is willing as a, to do, he, he would do them all for four hundred a window, which means we would save sixty-one hundred dollars, and it would actually close it up, because some windows right now don't go all the way to the top. 'Cause we weren't there the other day, and, and so water's gonna get in again. So rather, try to pay more money, five windows for, you know what I'm saying?
Yeah.
For twelve thousand, four hundred. Four hundred a window, so twelve thousand, four hundred, we could do all the windows in the top, in the schoolhouse.
And what that would allow is, and, and also the, he feels that the room on the north side would be a room where he could set up his working area. He doesn't need electricity, and he could work there because it's, it's pretty good. And also the basement, and there's a lot of light. And the basement is really conducive to storage for the town hall, and so we, we want the building to be utilized. We don't want it to just be a beautiful building, we want it to be utilized as a function, long-range plans for the town. Right now, it can, once this is done, it can be used for storage and for, for working, for, you know, for repairs for the town hall even, for those windows and, and then to do that. So that's what we're looking at. I wasn't sure, just procedures either, because when we've obtained funds in the past, it's been, you know, through matching money. So that's why I put it in through our budget.
Alright, do you guys have questions?
So you're not asking for thirty-two fifty increase, no, you're asking for eleven-nine increase? 'Cause you have five hundred dollars you ask for every year.
No, the five, well, the five hundred is the budget, so that's.
The five hundred is his budget.
That's just the budget, that hasn't changed.
So you're not, so you're asking for the full twelve-four on top of the five?
Correct, that's, that doesn't do our budget per se, it's for the building. The other thing, once the windows are all in, then the next step, we get the, the share of the bar, we can do the school the same way they did the town hall? And now you've got two buildings that are outside of it.
You know, and, and structurally, I mean, then it's, you know, ready for the next phase, whatever we decide on what we're gonna do and being on the committee. You know, we've talked about utilizing these buildings, that would save us money down the line, because, because structurally, the roof is done now, and the windows will be done, and some of the foundation has been done, so that's, that's what we're looking at, to chip away at this, so we don't have such. Right, and one of the floors is good and one is not, but, you know.
Do we have a capital budget?
Yeah, that's what.
And that where this belongs to?
Yeah, it definitely belongs there, it doesn't belong under your budget, it belongs under the capital.
Yeah, we figured we'd just present it and that you want it.
Right, so at first we were, that's, I think that's why we asked you to come back, just to let you know that it doesn't belong here, it does belong in the capital.
And we, and Scott has come over and met with us, and also, I mean, he seems excited about the project and knowing that, that's an accept. Because he came to me and asked me why the windows were boarded up. And those have been preserved in the. And those have been preserved, and they are inside, but they were boarded up previously.
Right. Any questions? No.
So, it was, just to reiterate, you, I'm sorry, your, your budget's gonna stay at five hundred, and your request is twelve-four from capital, from capital.
Correct. We were just showing how to do it, so we just put it this way, to let you guys move it.
And, and if, you know, and when we don't use all the five hundred, we return, we return, you know, we, every year, we're not spending it unless we need it, you know, and it's.
There's the same question I have.
Okay.
Is the building heated by the way, because working heating system, aren't they?
The heating system, yes.
Is it heated?
The heating system, there was a heating system there, there is a boiler that is in the basement, and it was hot air. It stopped being a school in nineteen fifty, but it was used by Civil Defense and different organizations. The room on the north side, the cultural council, actually, um, was, it was provided for the cultural council, and that's on the cultural, and the floors were sanded, painted, and we had inside storm windows. That room now needs, needs some sealing and so forth, but there's no heat, no heat. It was a scout house, uh, there was heat then, uh, but there's no plumbing.
No plumbing at all?
Nope. And, you know, there, there are so many residents in town that attended, um, grade school there before Free Town. So, structurally, it's a shell, and, um, no oil plumbing or asbestos. Any asbestos that was there was removed when we got the grant. So, we don't have to worry about asbestos. And the wiring, um, right now, is disconnected.
Should we address heating, I mean, if you're gonna spend all this money on windows and what have you?
I'm sorry, I can't move.
You said, should you address heating if you're gonna spend this money on windows?
We'll be addressing, that would be, that would be something next. I think that would be, we'd have to see what is feasible with boiler that was there, that, you know, is there, it was a hot air boiler, in a hot air system. I think that's a.
Is there a plan for this building? Strategically, or?
Hold on, hold on, hold on, back of the bus. So, there is a building committee, and that is part of the conversations with the building committee, is what is the future gonna look like for the town hall and the school, old school? Are we gonna join them? Are we gonna move town hall somewhere else? So, before we go and spend, like, a ton of money in there, these might be reimbursable, um, in some measure by the state at some point. So, we don't wanna go in and bring this up to, uh, you know, code and capacity right now, we wanna kinda leave it as is, so the building committee can actually have their time to decide, what is the future used in, is the town gonna support something like a project like this?
This might not be the right time, but we were talking about a capital plan that we don't have, as far as I know, in general. Shouldn't it just be part of a capital plan?
Do we have a?
We have a little review done.
Yeah.
We paid for a bu, building study done, and they went and did all the buildings, and what was here, what's being used, what we need, and that's, the building committee started on that, and the three big areas in need were town hall, police station, council on aging slash library. Right now, the building committee's looking at the most urgent need, which is the police station.
So, the, yeah, the building committee itself had a vote and said, you know, right now, it's the police station? And then, the building committee will still meet and decide, what is the next step? Is it a sewer line to get sewer and water up to the town hall before we go and invest money? Or do we just, you know, hope that a septic system is gonna be able to meet our needs? And do we just, you know, um, you know, build a bigger town hall, not a bigger town hall, but refurbish the town hall and join it with the old school?
Nice one, that, so what he's talking about, uh, we're talking about the bigger picture down the road. What we're talking about is maintain it, prevent it from deteriorating. We've already invested a lot of money, and, now, we're not gonna throw it away by letting it deteriorate back. So, what we're doing now, is trying to make sure it's sealed up tight, there's no water damage, nothing could happen to it. Then, if, if we have the sheriff's department, for example, paint the outside at least, we're at a level where it won't get worse.
Right, right.
And then, the town can move as it will, in the future, which, which is what they decide to do with it.
Right, and I think, I think when we had the assessment of all the town buildings, one suggestion was to build a large town hall, a large building in the center of town to, to house the police, library, uh, council on aging, and the town government. The committee was really unanimous in not building a huge structure to house all of these groups, because it wasn't conducive to have police with people going to the library and, and so forth like that. And so, we had to prioritize, and the prior, you know, priority really has been the police station. But we did talk about our historic buildings, and that we own them. And if we don't do something with them, we do still have to bring them up to date in order to dispose of them, if we ever decided to do that. And they are on the National Register, we have received some funding, and we can receive more funding, uh, in the process. But there are guidelines, uh, and that's why we're looking at restoration of the windows, and to save it from getting worse. And, and it can be used, I mean, it can be used, we have no place to have meetings, as you know. You know, and those are all the things. We have had, even the assessment group had a concept of joining the town hall and the school halls, and that's something, uh, we've attended, we've gone to Little Compton, where they did something similar, uh, so, it's been a long-range plan.
Did you have a question? Yeah, how many windows are gonna be repaired?
All of them.
Completely redone, some.
Replaced or repaired?
No, no, they rebuilt them.
They're gonna be redone.
And the casements?
Yeah, they do all that.
Okay.
I mean, it's not just.
So, they usable, up and down, and?
Yeah, the weights, they have the weights, and all that, yeah.
George, did you have another question, follow up?
Well, no, I mean, I, I would like to see all that happen, but it would seem to me, and I don't wanna spend a lot of time on this, but shouldn't the place be heated, if you're gonna try to use it?
We're not gonna try.
That's a ways down the road, though, I think.
Oh, that's way down, okay.
I think it'd use the storage, something like that, you know?
One, one other question, have you looked at applying for any grants for it, or, for the window replacements, or is there anything available? Are you gonna even try?
We're gonna attempt, we're gonna, we will attempt. There are some other groups besides, um, oh, Mass Historic, there are the others that are available. And we did get emergency funds before, you know, when it was leaking, and that was the avenue. So, we will certainly try.
The other thing is that, it all goes back, this is like nickel-dime, the big picture, we're talking about the state. I'd rather go to the state and say, we have a hundred thousand dollar project, we come up with fifty grand.
Yeah.
And to try to hit them for six thousand.
That was my point before.
You know what I mean?
You know, for our planning, they have planning and development grants, and so, which we take care of architectural fees.
We met with the state in some of the projects, you know? Like, if you're talking a hundred, a hundred fifty grand, you know, you go to the state, you try to get matching funds, you're talking seventy-five grand, you know? The six grand is, you know? I'm not saying it's changed per se, but in the big picture, I'd rather hit them for the big bucks.
Excuse me, I didn't introduce everyone that's here. This, this is Travis Bowie, uh, she lives on High Street, but she's a member of the Historic Commission, and probably you all know, because he's, anybody's vice chair, and then the chairperson, so. Travis, that's fine.
All right. You guys good? You guys good? All right, we're good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks. All right, Council on Aging, five forty-one.
No, it's fantastic. Five forty-one, you said.
He's trying to make a joke.
A joke.
It was easy when Paul was chair. We'd be done by now.
Yeah, right.
What do you need?
People. People, sure. He was out there all day, so I just beat him up all day.
What state do I, do I join, Fincow?
You're here, any, I might as well be part of it.
He's just gonna sit and be here for lunch.
Just here to make sure Excel doesn't get back, you know, or something, you know?
Hawaii, they, we have Fincow.
I'm just wondering, like, is there secondhand furniture? There you go, see, I got help.
Hello? Hi. Hey, Booth. Been so long, how are you? Hi, how are you? Good, good. All right, so, your budget, do you just wanna talk to us a little bit about, um, the increase in your budget? And again, it's five forty-one.
Well, as you know, last year, um, um, select board actually granted us to hire someone and pay them from the grants. So, basically, what we're doing is, some of the money that was actually taken, we took from the grant from previous year, or this year, to pay for, no, previous one, to pay for our budget. We didn't want, I don't ever, I've never given back a, a grant, 'cause I'd rather give it back through my budget to the town. So, some of this, you'll see, where it's like utilities and different things like that, at times, that's what the grant has paid for. So, I'm asking for that to be put back into our budget, because now, the grant is actually paying a person.
What happened last year was, uh, we wanted to, we needed, we needed to employ someone up, because the floater just didn't work with the town. Coming up here, they weren't sticking around, you'd call them back down there, and we just wasn't no consistency there. So, we, we saw an opportunity with the grant money to be able to use a portion of grant money to pay for someone to come in and do those tasks that we needed to do. So, we, at that point, used the grant money to subsidize the employee for the continuum of this year. So, that being said, for next year's budget, I requested that she submit the budget with that employee on, in our operating budget, so that we could use that grant money for other programs, other improvements, or what have you, rather than use it for an employee that was, that's the intent.
So, I'm gonna just be devil's advocate, okay? You came and asked the board to use the money because you wanted to get a person, and we said, okay, and I think we were very explicit, and we said, but if you lose the grant, you lose the person. So, now, you wanna add the person, and also, add more money to the budget to cover fuel and things, when the grant could take care of some of that as well, right?
No, I don't think we're decreasing any of our funds for operating this.
No, I did.
Well, that's what's on.
I did put that in, because when it gets towards the end of the year, and you have grant money there, and we, we have what we need. Just for example, like, you know that we bought the new, um, system, new computers, the sign-in system here at the COA? That come out of the grant. Previous years, we got the energy efficient window treatments, we've bought computers. There is things that we've bought through the years, through the grant, and then when you're sitting there with, you know, a couple thousand dollars, and it's like, what do you do with it? And then talking to the board, it's like, there's nothing else that we need, and we can pay our utilities, then we go ahead and do it. I would rather give back to the town than give a grant back.
So, it's just, so, you know, what you're saying is, you don't wanna use the grant to spend on things that you have been spending on, you wanna use that for new things that might pop up, and you wanna spend, so you wanna increase your budget with the town by twenty-one, twenty-two thousand dollars?
Which, which sixteen thousand roughly is for that nineteen-an-hour, fifteen to nineteen-hour.
Correct, correct, right. But then, also keep the grant on top of that for other things that you might, might wanna spend.
Right, for the programs, yeah. I mean, uh, senior, senior population has increased in past, in past few years, and for capital that we get from the state, we're not sure that's gonna go up this year, so that probably won't come through. If it does, then it's a plus, but, you know, right now.
I think it's also important to know why you need this extra person. So, you don't have, that's not in here, all right? So, we need to know why all of a sudden you need this extra person. That's number one.
It wasn't all of a sudden, we only have Rosemary and Barbara. They don't stop all day. They have to take care of the people coming in, so that takes them away from what has to be done, so everything was getting behind, kind of, you need somebody that could come in every day, take care of the paperwork, get that done, bringing up Barbara and Rosemary to take care of the people coming in. And that's the reason why we needed the extra help. And she is a godsend, let me tell you, she does work hard, she gets it done, and, but what we're saying is, that if we keep paying her out of our grant, that's fourteen, fifteen thousand dollars out of our grant, which leaves us with hardly nothing to do, the improvements that have to be done here. We need to put in doors that people could push, push button, come in with their wheelchair and stuff. We do not have that here.
Go ahead.
And that is why, you know, if we had our, our budget money, we could probably start doing things like this that has to be done, to help out the elderly.
I'm not, I'm not questioning that you want somebody, I'm questioning, before you gave us numbers, we have X amount of, um, you know, elderly, we do this program, that program, this, and that's not part of this, so that's my question. Number two is, if you need things to be fixed, like doors and things, that should go into the capital improvement budget. It shouldn't be coming out of a grant, it shouldn't be coming out of your budget, it should go through the capital improvement budget, that's why we have that.
Some of that stuff does, but there are opportunities that, you know, it doesn't always work that way, and so on, like the window treatment was one that we, we had for the grant, that was a small amount, we used for that.
The chairs that were still.
Chairs, we need all chairs, we needed those, so they came out of the grant, and there's only certain uses you can use with the grant, it's not, you know, carte blanche, you can use whatever you want, there's specific purposes for that grant money.
What's the total amount of the grant?
I believe it's seventeen, seventeen-five hundred in town, I believe.
Seventeen-five-ten? George, questions?
No, it's straightforward.
Guys, girls, ladies, gentlemen, you're a double duty.
How fish? I know a lot about it. I'm staying quiet right now, thank you.
Okay. Do you have any questions? Charlie?
Just, do you know generally what the grant can be used for, and what?
It can be, it can be used for quite a few things, um, and of course, it, it keeps expanding. I know there's a new guide that's gonna be coming out, and I'll make sure that you each have a copy of it, 'cause it, I'm sure there's gonna be added things that it can be used for, and I'm waiting for that, too.
Couple of things that we, we put on the wayside last year because of the employee that we really needed, was the fact that we were looking at getting a cooler refrigerator, because opportunities come along where we can get a lot of produce and things like that, that we give out to the seniors, but we have no place to store it. Right now, it's being sold at, uh, people, you know, BFW, exactly, wanting those in their cooler, and stuff like that. The other opportunity we had, was we looked, looking at a storage compartment, something similar to the police department, we went over there and looked at that one. But once, once we decided, the, the board decided that we, more importantly, we needed someone to take care of the, the administration that was lacking because of the manpower, we decided to, you know, retail those and focus over there. So, this year, with the funds, if we can get the funds out of, out of the grant money, we can utilize that grant money for probably a cooler, or a storage for supplies and things like that, that which, I mean, all supplies is to, to our seniors in the town. We have, uh, over two thousand seniors right now, and, I mean, if you know some of the programs that are going on with, in, in this building, it's overwhelming, I mean, it's unbelievable.
I, I got a question. Go ahead.
Barbara, how many seniors come through these doors in a week?
Looking at the, um, average daily, now, in this program, I can do it, the program is saying that we have, the average daily balance is, say, forty point three seniors a day. Actually, from July first till now, counting each person once, we've got a, and they sign themselves in, we fill up four thousand, which we have, as of today, from Jackie, we have, um, two thousand three hundred and seventy-three seniors. But that's because we, we also serve younger people, too. If they need paperwork done, say, for Citizens for Citizens, or boot stamps, or anything like that, they come here to do that, it's not just seniors. So, we basically serve anyone in the population that needs help. So we basically serve anyone in the population that needs help. And that's where the number goes up higher because I, it amazes me when I look at it, it's like, why, how can that be? Well, when you, when you're also serving younger people.
Well, just to be clear, you really need the money for so many hours of manpower, is that right? Twenty hours or?
It's nineteen.
It would be nineteen, I guess.
Nineteen now. Sixteen.
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 You're sixteen.
It's bad, sixteen. Right now, she's sixteen, so.
Is that what the whole increase is?
That was, that is, well, that's one part of it. Yeah.
Twenty-one, sixteen was.
And the other, if you look at the others, it's, um, contractual and then money that we have used, instead of turning the grant back, we were able to pay some of the utilities, so we did, so that way we could, every year, we turn money back to the town from our budget because the grant, I did not want to give that back. I wanted to make sure it was spent. And that was an allowable cost, so that's what we did when we didn't have anything else that we needed.
I, I'd just like to see, if you're going to make capital expenditures, put them through the capital expenditure budget.
Yes, I have.
Capital improvement. If you're gonna automate the, the doors to the push button, which they should be, but that shouldn't come through either grant or in your budget, that should come through capital improvement. If you're gonna do a built-in freezer that's going to be attached to the building, that should go through capital improvement, not necessarily through your, your budget.
Well, that's a difficult task as well. I think it's easier to try to get it through the grant and try to get it through the capital.
That is absolutely easier, but really, your improvement of, of capital investment of the town.
You know how the system works, right?
You had me with the door, you lost me with the freezer.
Well, because I heard a thing about a walk-in freezer over there, so I.
Cooler.
A walk-in cooler.
I'm good with the freezer.
I like the freezer, like standard freezer myself, it's not pulling into the wall. But, you know what I'm saying?
Yeah, well, we, we, obviously, we'll try, we'll try to do as much as we can with capital expenditure, but there's opportunities where you need it. You know, in this business, and you can confirm with her, I mean, she'll call me up and she'll call any one of the board members and say, "Listen, we need a truck here to go pick up some produce from Stock and Shop," or something like that. And when you could get, get opportunities to be able to give all this stuff out to, to our seniors, and you, you have to pass it, it's a shame. You know, that, that's our main concern. It happens, yes, like you said, it happens a lot.
Yeah, the other thing that, for me, um, we end up giving it to, say, food banks, um, the veterans, transitional classes, stuff. We do give it away to those, you know, that really are, you know, need it, even though we are the ones that go get it. Because when we get that call, we have within half hour to pick it up, that's it. So, whatever's being done stops and out the door we run.
Alright, I'm good. Alright, alright, all set, thank you.
Thank you. Conservation question?
Conservation question.
Dr. L. T. Kennedy.
Sun Con coming?
What is the number on that?
It's one seventy-one.
Going one, it's conservation question?
No budget. Unfunded.
So, Madam Chair, I recommend we hold conservation commission at another time.
Okay, perfect. We're all set. Well, good judge.
Quick question. How many is capital funds? What is the process for the department to request something? Does that go to any town meeting? Or they put it into a?
No, they, they, just like this, a request like this, they submit it all to Scott, and Scott puts it all through. And then it gets funded at town meetings by the taxation. Just like the capital equipment, capital improvement, same thing.
They all know that process. I'm not, I would think they do, but I'm wondering because we keep running across it, so. We're also on the legal process, that's, that was part of that today.
I think that some of the departments are reluctant, just like, they just think it's easier to go get a grant and do it that way than it is.
It's easier to go around the system.
Right. Set a plan.
Instead of actually working with it, it's easier to.
Alright, our next meeting with, um, with you guys is May first, and that's when it's Town Administration Reserve Fund Legal Management Info Systems, and then we'll add conservation on that too.
May first?
Yeah. There's no, no, um, schedule yet for the capital budget, which we were just talking about, so I think that we'll probably throw that in, probably the meeting after that. But, I mean, we're getting close that we really have to set a bunch of numbers.
Yeah, we're gonna get together pretty quick.
And the warrant articles are gonna be closing soon too, so we're gonna have to look at those.
Twenty-fourth, I think it was, the last day.
My next Monday, next Monday at four.
That's what I'm thinking.
Okay.
Is that done?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Did you approve the transfers yet?
We can do that now.
Oh, we do that now? While you're here.
We've got transfer, I know you got copies, uh, from the official from select board for a fact.
Fund, reserve fund transfers?
Oh, yeah.
I don't have it. Do you have it?
I'm getting to use, uh, that Wednesday meeting that we had with Ken.
Sorry about that. I gotta do something different here.
It's first day, forty years, that transfer. It's a transfer.
Should look like that. There you go.
Probably to, I want to fix the law. That, that's the detail. The highway. And the other one, Lower Street Bridge.
So, there's a first request for transfer on our reserve fund.
I just was having a hard time tonight.
For, uh, legal bills for twenty seventeen, FY seventeen, um, present in the balance for the account right now is minus two seventy-five. Amount requested is six thousand fifty-seven and sixteen cents.
I'll make a motion to, uh, finance commission.
Still a second?
Second.
Alright, all in favor?
Aye.
Next one's, uh, legal bridge.
What exactly are we doing?
This is a transfer.
Either a transfer, we'll vote on that.
Okay. We need to vote on them to send them to you.
I know that.
What you do with that after is.
Well, I know that, but I wasn't even aware that we had it.
Okay. Next, to pay for the additional bus while the Lower Street Bridge was closed, um, this is submitted by the school department. The amount is seven thousand six hundred and twenty dollars.
Make a motion to forward it to the finance committee?
Second.
Alright, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, um, highway department, um, present in the balance right now is minus six thousand seventy-three dollars and eighty cents. Amount requested is seven thousand one thirty-six. Unanticipated repairs to the transmission, steering pump, et cetera, on a nineteen ninety-four GMC Topick. It's extraordinary repairs, it fell outside the expected routine maintenance. Chuck? Do you want to talk, talk about that, or are you all set? I know we're all set.
I think we're all set.
Okay. It's just.
It's your truck.
Your truck.
Truck repairs, transmission.
Yeah, seven thousand dollars, more or less.
Okay. Alright, what's the board's pleasure?
To forward it to the finance committee, make a motion.
Do I have a second?
Second motion.
Alright, all in favor?
Aye.
That's it, you got them all? Do you have them all, George?
I have one here, water emergency. Water emergency. Pay water bill from city of River to city, city of New Bedford for the rest of fiscal year, fifty thousand dollars. Something like that?
That's a reserve fund transfer?
We have to let them spend their money.
They have to send the law.
If you don't have it, uh.
Or something about water.
Okay, here. It was in the folder, it's not on.
Was it in the agenda, posted agenda?
Posted agenda. Alright. Pay water bills from the city of River and the city of New Bedford for the rest of the fiscal year. Water use is higher than anticipated. The amount requested is fifty thousand dollars present in the balance, um, and the account is two dollars, negative two dollars and ninety-five cents. This doesn't come out of your reserve fund, it comes out of the, um, water and emergency reserve fund, so.
Do we vote on it? We have to.
Yep, you have to allow them.
We have to let them spend it, I mean, George.
I'll make the motion to forward that to finance commission.
Do I have a second? Alright, all in favor?
Aye.
And the last one was something to do with that bus, because it all, the street bridge.
We did that one.
We did that one, alright.
Alright.
We stuck that one in.
I guess you did. I just told, uh, George and I got it the other day, it was in the file that we got, so.
Yep, so you're all set, so you guys can go. Thank you. Alright, Scott. Scott Barbado here? No?
Where we going? Must be some other place you do. Yeah, yeah.
You can continue the meeting.
You've been out for a while.
You want to speak to him?
Right.
Isn't he here?
Yes, he's right, right, right over there. Right, he's in the tan shirt.
Oh, okay, got it. Okay, so we have a letter from, um, Scott Barbado. The building department wanted to submit a policy change request to eliminate a perceived unfairness with building permit fees charged to non-residential construction projects. All non-residential entities are forced to be categorized as commercial ventures and thus subject to a minimum fee of five hundred dollars. The policy is consistent, yet we request to be able to be, we request to be able to be flexible with residential type nonprofit projects to allow a fee that is based on construction cost. Projects that are at twenty thousand dollars of construction cost and lower be based on a percentage of one point five percent. Examples would be a home used for display, camp type dwelling, a home used as a business that needs siding and a roof to be charged at a percentage of construction cost from twenty thousand dollars and below. Examples where no charge, no change would be needed, we, we would offer our churches over two thousand square feet and the usual clear commercial businesses such as HDP and Stock and Child's Warehouse. Okay, let's not all talk at one time. So, I, so, it's so hard because we don't see, uh, um, a list of the building fees all on one, and we don't know what other, um, towns are doing, and we have not actually looked at the building fees in quite a long time that I think that we should probably ha, review those building fees and see where we stay. I understand what he wants to do is not charge it by a hundred dollar fee for, um, for nonprofit projects. I get that. I'm just, right now, I'd rather, from just, and I'm just speaking outside the box right now, I want to see that in, in a consistent basis on a sheet of paper that I can vote on along with the other fees that we want to look, that I want to look at. But I don't, I know that this is for a certain project right now, and I don't mind voting on just that one.
To make it easy then, um, since I, I do know a little bit of background.
Right.
It was the historical society.
Right.
Alright, so I'll make a motion that we allow the fee for the associate, for the historical society, uh, roof project to be lowered to the residential rate, it would be fifty dollars.
Can we do that on a specific one, or do we have to do that more like this letter is and do a general reduction?
What is it saying on the agenda? No, it just says for nonprofit organization. Doesn't say specific one way or the other. It says discuss adjusting.
In other words, does this board have the power to change fees on a specific basis?
We do that a lot. Like, um, a nonprofit will come in for, um, an alcohol thing or something like that, like Camp Welch, and we waive those, we waive those fees, so we do have that. But I, I think that we need to be careful, um, and sometimes, um, one blanket does not fit all, so.
I think we need to do a review of our fees versus neighboring towns to see where we fall shakeout anyhow.
I agree.
I'll make that motion with the caveat that, uh, town council agrees that we can make that on the building fee.
Alright, that's fine. Okay, you have that, Ali? Alright, so I have a motion, is that Patti a motion, Charlie?
Sure.
Okay. I have a motion, a second, any, for the discussion. Alright, no, listen, Barbara.
Aye.
Um, and can we have the building, um, inspector come in at the next meeting? And, um, have all of his, uh.
Review of fees. And neighboring towns, so we can see what we have versus, we'd just like to fire the property with their, their own fees.
We're all set, if you want to point Mr. Beard.
Alright, when we get to the, um, okay, thank you. Alright, signed CN Port contract for the water valve project as previously awarded.
What are we doing for the signature? Do we need a motion to endorse it because we already approved it, we already voted for it?
Just, um, be aware that town council has not, correct? Town council has not reviewed this contract at all.
So, CN.
So do you want to send it to town, town council for review?
I don't know if this is.
Or is it outside of that?
Yeah.
It is void, like, so.
But we, I mean, we've already voted to endorse it, so, I mean.
Alright, what's the board's pleasure?
Motion to endorse.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Alright, all in favor?
Aye.
I'm abstaining, um, and again, can we descend to make sure that policies and procedures that are set in place that all contracts get reviewed before they come to us by town council?
You have a second there.
Okay. Gary? You're up. Oh, discuss and approve. Ambulance fees.
Yes. Basically, we look at ambulance fees every five years. So it's been five years, I reviewed them, and I increased them just the amount that we normally do, which is about twenty-five percent up, which is still considered very low. As you can see in the letter I, I wrote to Jack, I compared us to our neighboring towns of Berkeley, Rochester, Lakeville. And as you can see, even without increase, we're still one, because it's considerably lower than the rest of them. For Berkeley and Rochester, they go by what Comstock produces as their top fifty rates for their clients. And they just basically, every, every year, whatever that rates are, that's how they set theirs. I'm not sure what formula Lakeville uses, but they can see there somewhere in the, in the middle. So it's up to the board to decide what they want to do. You guys can change the rates at any time of the year. It doesn't have to be, you can change them in May, you can vote, you vote six weeks later, change them again. But I would, I would recommend that we change them at least yearly. Every January, see what the new Medicare rates are, and then base our rates off of them.
So, my question is, and, and I agree that we haven't seen these in a long time, but my question is, is that we do all these abatements, so does that mean that our abatements are going to go up significantly too?
Mm-hmm. The higher you raise your rates, the more you're going to write off because there, because certain programs, whether it's a federal program, they're only going to pay a certain amount of money for the ambulance runs. And then how would you rebuild? They're going to cap it at whatever that Medicare rate is, so the rest of it has to be. So the rest of it has to be, has to be paid. And the accountant sitting right there, she can probably speak highly, more intelligently than I can on numbers. But the same thing, we also have contractual write-offs that have to, have to written off too, so.
What are you doing with private insurance? Do you have any contracts with private insurance?
We do.
Blue Cross.
Blue Cross we feel. And we, well, we view them as they, as they expire, but I take note of that, look at those also.
Now, will our rates dictate some of that towards when you go to Blue Cross and negotiate rates with Blue Cross?
Yeah.
So the higher our rate, the higher Blue Cross. We can, we should be able to negotiate with Blue Cross to increase their rate.
Maybe, yeah. We'll probably see the biggest increase is motor vehicle accidents, which is our biggest, our biggest payers, vehicle crashes.
That's, that was the next point I was going to make, Chief's way ahead of me. Motor vehicle crashes, that's getting not paid by health insurance, that's getting paid by vehicle insurance, motor vehicle insurance, and they pretty much pay rate.
Right, true. That's where we, where we keep the extra, if you look at the list, most of them include like backboards and their base pays. We keep them separate because a lot of times you'll get that extra money that'll come into us. But, so whatever the board wants to do, if you don't make a decision tonight, you guys can do what you want to do. If you want to have somebody from the building company speak with you, you have certain questions, you want to email me, I can forward them to our contact there and whatever you guys want to do. But you can do what we've done in the past, or you can go as high as you want, as low as you want.
Chief, the ComStar, they set, well, they, they research and then set rates. So, and they do that every year. Okay, so they're going to keep up with things that we're not, they're never going to be chasing you up. And I'm a little cynical, I'm saying that if, if, you send a bill that's lower than the standard to an insurance company, their pro- their coders are going to probably put what was, what was there to the fee that they usually pay anyways, which could be higher than what we're charging them. And, and that, that's going off to profits for the insurance company, probably.
Yeah, I, I understand what you're saying, yeah.
So I don't have any problem with going with whatever ComStar says. It's every year, we don't have to handle it again, as long as we have ComStar, correct?
Correct, they'll, they'll do the math for us.
Right.
They'll, they'll, they take their top fifty clients, what their, what their rates they're getting.
Right.
And that's people that, that should get paid.
Right.
And that's what they set them on in January. We can do the same thing, the only thing on the town policy side is that you're going to see your abatements are probably going to increase.
Right.
And you may get some people complaining about the bills more.
Okay.
But that's up to, whatever you guys, whatever the board wants to do.
I, I don't have a problem.
But if you want, if you want to go that high level, I, I have another sheet made out with those rates you guys need to sign, and we'll send it over.
Chief, do you have a recommended rates? I, I see your proposed rates with your standard twenty-five percent increase. Do you have a recommended rates on your research you've done, what you would like to do?
I, well, what I would recommend, and I'm agreeing with Mr. Sullivan, is that if you want to go to the highest level, which is, it's basically, they do the math for us, they figure what the cities and towns are getting. I only compare those to our communities of our, similar to our size with that same low population density. Because that's really, that really impacts what you're going to get paid because you're tying guys up for three hours of, of an hour of transport. Impacts you also. I didn't, I didn't include any of the cities, but I just went by, what you have in your paper there is the twenty-five percent. We normally go up every five years, which is the really cheapest area in town. Or we can go to one extreme with, like Sullivan says, go to the highest fifty. I am no, no dog in the fight. If you, if we, if we have higher bills.
Well, how far are these rates from your higher numbers?
What is your ComStar number?
These, that, that's, these are the, the Berkeley, that's, that's their rates.
What is your ComStar number?
Yeah, your ComStar numbers.
Same ones, same as Berkeley and Rochester charge.
That's what they're recommending we charge.
That's what they're recommending you charge.
I, I personally don't want to jump to the, the extreme that we're going with by, by ComStar. I would like to see their numbers annually, and we can review what we are and where they are and make adjustments per the board. I don't necessarily just want to wind with.
I mean, you're looking at probably doing it again next January. So if you want to go up to twenty-five percent now and kind of ease our way into this.
Yeah, why don't we, why don't we look at how this plays out and then, in a year from now, in a year from now, at the same time, we review on, and see how much makes jumps.
We'll probably push it more towards the January side of the, yeah.
I'll make the motion to adopt the new proposed rates as cited here in this letter. BLS rate at eleven thirty-nine thirty-seven, BLS rate non-emergency at seven twelve eleven, ALS base rate non-emergency at eight fifty-four fifty-two, ALS one base rate at thirteen fifty-three, ALS two base rate, emergency specialty care transport mileage nineteen fifty-eight thirty-one, twenty-three eighteen nineteen, and base mileage of twenty-one ninety-seven.
Some of them are a significant difference, clearly.
In five years, things change a lot. Extra ambulance, ambulance attendant MBA two hundred dollars, C collar MBA only fifty dollars, spinal mobilization MBA only two hundred dollars.
Guys, Berkeley, Lakeville rates, pardon, Berkeley Rochester rates are the, the standard in the industry. Don't see any problem with going.
I think we could be there in, in six months instead of two and all in one shot. And if you want to go, that was the motion.
All right, I have a motion, do I have a second?
A second.
You want to discuss further?
Yeah.
Okay, go ahead, Charlie.
I, I think we're, we're, why, why, we have, we have the mechanism to set a rate tonight that's the standard in the industry, which is researched by a company that does this. And we can go to that and we can.
Because I, I understand what you're saying.
Not have to revisit this every, every year, every, you know, every, every five years. But we're, we do, we did it, we, we're way behind because we only do it every five years. And now we have the mechanism, we, we hire this company to do this work, and we should let them do the work that they're, we're paying them to do. And if, if there's rates that people who are not able to pay, we, we abate them. That's in the policy all along.
But then, and I totally get what you're saying, because like I said, this is nineteen fifty-eight to thirty-three twenty-three. I mean, that's just, some of these are kind of crazy. But on, on the other side of things, we're saying, right now, we can clearly look at people and say, we, we increased our rates by twenty-five percent. Instead of somebody asking us, well, how, you know, you raised your rate seventy-five percent. I know that's an extreme, but I'm saying that we right now can say we raised our rates twenty-five percent, and we're going to look at this in six months or whatever. I don't know, I, I just feel like, because people are going to ask us, why did you increase your rates by such a significant amount? And we have to be able to address that. And then people are going to say, how come your abatements went up so much? And we're going to say, oh, because we raised our rates and people can't afford to pay, so, or companies don't pay, so now that's where our abatements go up. So it's like a little bit of both.
I, I see, I, I see that it may be a little bit of a culture shock. But the, the fact of the matter is, is that if, we're, we're leading money on the table.
Some of our citizens do get the bill and pay them themselves too, you know. So some of our citizens will be affected by this. We're not just talking about billing big companies. We're also talking about sending bills to little ladies that may not submit, may, may actually pay some of this and, and to, to a jump. And I'm not saying, I'm not saying that, that's what you want to do, obviously. I'm not saying you want to put this on the back of our citizens, but ultimately, that's what it is. And I, 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 just to blanketly say, let's go, let's follow a company and, and whatever they set their rates at up. I'd like to have oversight onto that too. I absolutely like to look at their rates and set our rates, but just to say.
I mean, if you've got to go to an expert, you've got to pay that expert, then.
I'd like to have his opinion, absolutely.
Well, we're going to revisit it January, which is about like six, seven months away from now, so.
But to Charlie's point, we never have to revisit this again, as long as.
Well, you got to, every, every year, you have to set, you have to, you have to change your, you have to sign off on anyway.
If our goal is to get to what these numbers are, then I definitely think you should do it in an increment. And, and then, then in next January, you can, you can be at that number. I just think it is kind of a culture shock. It's a culture shock for me, that's for sure.
It's basically a policy shift for the town. We normally would.
Try to keep rates as low as possible.
Try to keep everything as low as possible because basically, we consider the ambulance as a service rather than as a, as a profit.
If I had, if I ruled the world, it'd be.
Yeah, free.
Yeah.
No, you never know.
I know.
It wasn't that long ago, you don't remember when it was free, when that big discussion happened? You were going to send bills to people?
Exactly, yes, it would be, it's a nice thing to, I mean, I, I think that's why you pay taxes, to have a service. But not all these nickel and dime fees that we have to pay now, but that's the way of the world, the world changed, you know?
Hmm, okay, so we have a motion on the table to accept the proposed rates at the twenty-five percent, or proposed rates as submitted by the fire chief with a review in January. I have a motion at second, we've had discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstained?
He's putting it aside.
Oh, you did? Oh, I'm sorry. I was, do you see me abstaining? Are you still thinking about it? All right.
We have to sign that.
I, I hear, see, both sides.
In January, if we have any complaints, then we go up to that. We have, is it all complaints? I mean, just people who pay.
It's in the signature file.
Okay. Some people that can't sort out the most of the ones that pay, that's the worst.
We have to sign all of those later.
You're a strong team.
Yeah, you're, you're going. All right, call in.
What do you do? Always ask yourself that.
Fresh, fresh. Come on, Dancing with the Stars is on in five minutes. I'm kidding, I don't watch that.
Housewives at that.
No.
Hello?
Hi.
How are you doing?
How are you?
Good.
All right, do you want to talk to us about the fuel pump?
Okay. So we had a fuel facility built about over twenty years ago, and it included a, a pump. That pump serves both, both gasoline and diesel to all of the town vehicles. Council on Aging, police department, highway, ambulance, fire apparatus, et cetera. We've been incurring problems with the pump, where it's placed out of service. That has resulted in emergency vehicles having to seek gasoline elsewhere. And that's fine when gasoline is available at some of these retail outlets, but it is quite possible during a storm or other emergency that those retail outlets will not be able to provide the fuel. I've been informed that some of the parts on this old pump are not available. Our maintenance person is looking on eBay and other sources to get them. So I, I think it's, I think it's time to replace the pump. I, I checked with the accountant, and it's anticipated that we'll have approximately fifty-one thousand dollars left at the end of the fiscal year in gasoline. The, the low bid, and I, I provided copies of the bids, is approximately twenty-seven thousand. So I think, I think, no, it's, it's comfortable for us to use part of that fuel money to replace the pump.
Questions?
No.
I have a motion to the board.
I'll make a motion that we, oh.
Fuel management.
Go, fuel management, we, we take the twenty-seven hundred, twenty-seven thousand, three hundred and forty-five dollars, I think that's the.
Five, five, four.
Five, five, four, okay. From the fuel account to purchase a new fuel pump.
Do you have a second?
Second.
All right, I have a motion at second to go with fuel management services in the amount of twenty-seven thousand, five hundred and fifty-four dollars. All those in favor?
Aye.
One question, well, maybe not just one. So we had a letter submitted today about litter on the roadways.
It's terrible.
It's aho. Is, is there any way we can put up a no littering sign? And how can we enforce it, and what is the fines?
Well, I think the fines are up to a thousand dollars. I'd have to check the statute.
Okay.
You know, that, the way we would enforce it is if an officer observed an event, he could either choose to enforce it under the bylaw, which is a non-criminal citation, or could issue a summons to bring the person into court. Personally, I would favor bringing them to court. Signage can be purchased. And then we have some resources available, as you know, you've used them before, to pick up trash around town as well. This is the time of year where you really see all of this.
Well, because the snow's gone and.
Yeah.
Now, does Kevin have, Kevin Benioff have the ability as a health agent to issue citations to such things as a business that was producing or failing to, to non-produce litter, I guess you could say, failing to like cover dumpsters and things like that?
Geez, I'd have to look under the board of health regulations to see if, if there's a regulations that, that's applicable.
What is the town, is the town bylaw separate from the state statute on litter?
Yes.
What is, what is our?
Well, it kind of emulates the language of the state statute, but allows the non-criminal disposition.
What's the fee? We can't, where, that I can't.
No more than three hundred dollars.
That's our statutory cap, is no bylaw, three hundred dollars.
Statute, yes.
We're there though. It's not like fifty dollars or twenty-nine dollars.
I have to double check. Most of the time, we, we just issue the summons, so they go before.
Can you do both?
Well, I, you, you probably can, but I, I think as a, a matter of good practice, you choose to prosecute person, person through one stream, not the other, so you don't have double penalties. That, that would be my recommendation, you choose one or the other.
I have a question. If it's a thousand dollars, how come XL only gets charged a hundred bucks for the litter? Chad Kewell told me that was the major amount that, the most they could charge, was a hundred bucks.
I think they would charge the, no, they would charge the failure to, they were, they were cited, cited.
It was a citation, but they got not a, not a littering.
Charge. They were cited for not keeping their trash, as it were, on their facility. Bylaw, health bylaw, the health regulation citing, wasn't for littering.
Because I'm still picking it up, so I was just wondering. There may be difference.
So that could answer a part of your question, Charlie.
Right.
I guess Kevin, Kevin could give him, give the establishment a hundred dollar citation for a board of health thing, so.
But before we leave tonight, I'd like to discuss that a little bit about XL.
It's not on the agenda.
It's on the agenda.
You, you may want to revisit your, your regulations. I think they were last promulgated in nineteen seventy-seven.
No, I think that that should be something that we should look forward to in the fall, to change some of those bylaws in the fall.
Yeah, well, we should have a commission to put together.
Yep.
Including the chief, to come up with some changes on it.
Agreed. All right, that was, that was my question. Anything else? All right. Thank you.
All right, good night.
Okay, Jessica, you're up.
Hi.
Hi.
Hello.
So did you guys read my letter?
Yes, yes, we did.
What do you think?
Premiership was excellent.
I think the concept, this is me, I think the concept of having this is great. I just don't know what the policies or procedures are going to be for every department and how that's all going to work. So can you explain to me how it's all going to work?
Well, everybody would be kind of different, because it would be the same, like, fire already does this online. So they do, you still would do a turnover, you'd have to print out a report from the system, and there would be three copies, one for each, one for me, one for Kim, and one for their department. So they'd come with their turnover, it's just like they do with any money, except there's no cash. The cash goes directly into the account. They come and I sign off on it, saying, you know, the money went into the account, and Kim gets a copy, I get a copy, and they keep a copy. And so it would work the same way as we have our. And so, it would work the same way as we have already set up for online payments, except you wouldn't go online and do it, you could do it right at the window. So, we kind of already do it, except, you know.
Not with credit card.
Yeah, online, you can pay with your credit card.
Oh, that's true, online, you can.
Yeah, it's the same exact system, it's the same company. I mean, I haven't been trained personally on it, so I can't write up a policy. But based on how we handle the online payments, it would be pretty much exactly the same, except they're at the window swiping their card.
So, every department would have their own card reader?
They would, and they would be trained personally by the representative from the bank. So, she would come in and she would sit with them and set it up however the department head wants it set up. So, there would be different dropdowns, they would choose what they're paying for. So, when they printed out the report, it would print out what they paid for. An item, itemize it. You can do it daily, you can print out the report, you can do it. It would have to be done monthly, because I balance with Kim, so they would have to at least turn over their money. I would want them to do it weekly, just so we're not waiting till the end of the month to lump it all in and get it in to VEDAR. But, I mean, I, I would personally have, we're not doing it daily, just because we do everything else daily. But departments usually do it weekly, so.
We, we've discussed in the past about doing a single point.
Single point of purchase.
Right, which, this would make a lot of sense there, because everybody would be through your office, and you wouldn't have to get reports from all the different offices.
Yeah, yeah, I, I, right now, when, like, the burning permits and stuff, I actually go in and print out the report at the end of the month and say, and I usually fax it to the fire department, and I say, I need to turn over for this much money, so that me and Kim match, so I can get it into VEDAR. And actually, Jackie already uses this system for her dog licenses, so I've been doing the same thing with her.
She doesn't have a card reader at her desk, though, does she?
No, it's online.
It's online, so I, I'm trying to just talk about point of purchase at the town hall window with a card reader, not online.
Well, it's the same system, the same company, same system, that's why I'm kind of, you know what I mean? Same exact thing, except you're just reading the card at the window, not typing it in online, you know what I mean? So, the same procedure we use for the online payments would work.
Questions, Charlie?
Uh, the only one is, it's gotta be free, there's no, um.
No, there is fees, yes.
So, and, so, but the, but the fees would be paid by the person, by a payee, correct?
Yes, the town isn't charged anything.
It's not gonna incur anything, but sometimes it do. I'd be good with it.
Yeah, they're unique, they don't have to absorb the fees like the rest of the world that takes credit cards.
Yeah, right.
What's the cost of each card reader?
They, they don't cost us anything.
There's no monthly fee?
Nope, nothing.
So, if they break, they're replaceable?
I'm sure, yeah.
By lease, or by, we own them, and are they owned by Unibank here, the corporation, and they just give you a new one?
Yeah, I would just think they would just give us a new one. Um, but when we did this online, we had to do a certain amount of time, and we had to sign a contract. So, what is that?
I believe that contract covers this, that contract is the same exact.
I just feel like, right now, there's so many, like, it's a great concept, but I feel like there's still some unanswered questions. Like, is there a contract? Are there fees to keep the card readers up to date? Are they free? Like, you're thinking that is, but I'm not sure if it is, I, I don't know. Um, I'd be willing to try, try it in, in your department and see how that works.
Yeah, sure.
So, you can run out, run the kinks out, but I'm not really, I don't think we should stop giving out card readers to every department without, A, policies and procedures, and B, what are the kinks in, in how much is it gonna cost us? I would say do it in your department, as long as the, the town doesn't have to come up with another contract that we have to sign, and that there's no fees on our side.
Okay.
What do you guys think?
Um, is it tied into the internet? Is it, is there a dedicated phone line, is there?
It is, you have to have internet to be able to use it. And it goes right in the computer, so we will be able to print out receipts with this, which we can't do now, we just stand.
How do you connect to the computer, though? How do you, the terminal, I mean, the terminal's gonna be at the window, they're gonna swipe their card into their PIN.
Yeah, I, I haven't been trained on it.
Okay.
I, yeah, you, I have to actually get it to be trained on it, so, yeah.
Can somebody come?
I was just gonna say, can we have a, have a company come in and sit down and talk to them and?
Kevin and I have already met with her once, because he wants this at the transfer station, that's how all this started. And then other departments started asking me, and then residents asked left and right, so I'm like, you know.
I just want to make sure that while we put it in, in place, that it's done, not that it wouldn't be done the right way, but that we, we certainly know what we're talking about, and making sure that we don't have to sign off on anything, and there's no hidden cost or anything like that. So, why don't we try to have them come in for our next meeting?
Sure.
That'd be great.
All right, perfect.
Thank you. Good night.
Good night, thank you.
Um, select minutes, February sixth, March sixth, March twentieth, and April fourth.
Um, right. I'll make a motion to accept as agreed for all but equal four.
You make a motion, do you have a second?
He's quite there.
Oh, yeah, I'll say. All right, any discussion? Any changes, additions? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Hey, Charlie.
All right. Make the motion for April, April fourth?
Second motion, accept April fourth.
All right, uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, um, so, District Board Selecting Meeting, days and times. Things are getting crazy and having a lot of meetings all the time. And I know that that pop-up meetings are gonna happen every now and then, especially because budgets are coming through. But it'd be really good to be consistent on a monthly basis.
Try to get back to the first and third Monday of the month.
Is that good for you, Charlie, first and third, and six o'clock, like, I mean.
I like, I like the idea of a fir kind.
Yeah, well, we did five-thirty, because we had to meet with Kim, so there will be. But if we're just having a, a straight board meeting without having a, a work meeting, sort of, I think six o'clock is perfect for everybody.
Yeah.
All right. Do you want the first and third Monday? Because it's usually every other week.
Yeah, we, it should be first and third.
If you.
Unless we need it, I mean, if there's something.
If you need to, then that's fine.
I'm sure budget time, right before the, the town meeting, we probably have to, I don't know.
All right, we're all set, um, Personnel Board.
Personnel Board, I have a certificate appointment for David Beard. Um, that's it. Yeah, that is it. Um, for Finance Committee, term expires at the annual town election of two thousand eighteen, to appoint him to the vacant spot.
Second motion. Well, I'll make the motion, I guess, huh?
And I'll second.
I have a motion made and seconded, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I have a change of, change of status for Patrick Lee, signal operator, part-time, uh, in the Communications Department. He is resigning that position.
I'll make a motion to accept the resignation and the change of status.
I'll second that.
I have a motion made and seconded to accept the resignation of Patrick Lee. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, can we send him a letter thanking him for his service?
Sure.
I have an employee change of status for Philip Pine, student officer, patrolman P-one, four-to-two schedule, at an honor rate of twenty-two thirty, to student officer, patrolman level P-two, four-to-two schedule, base rate of twenty-four fourteen, educational incentive not applicable.
Make the motion to accept the change of status.
It's a letter service, please, I'll second that.
I have a motion made and seconded, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Um, there's another one for him, for student officer, for Philip Pine, student officer at patrolman P-two, four-to-two schedule, twenty-four fourteen base rate, to patrolman probationary, one-year patrol, patrolman P-two, four-to-two schedule, no change of wages, um, he graduating from the academy, actually, just graduated academy, four-fourteen.
I'll make a motion to a sec.
I'll second it.
Motion made and seconded, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Congratulations. Letter from the Board Selecting.
I have a change of status for patrolman, uh, for Seth D'Amello, Reserve Patrolman R-one, step one, base rate of seventeen sixty-three, to Reserve Patrolman R-one, step two, with no change of wage. It's a step change per CBA.
So, with that motion, second.
Motion made and seconded, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Nicholas Drinkwine, change of status for Nicholas Drinkwine, Reserve Patrolman R-one, step one, base rate seventeen sixty-three, to Reserve Patrolman R-one, step two, with no wage change, again, this is a step change per CBA.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Karen Pigeon, Reserve Patrolman R-two, step three, base rate of twenty-twenty-eight, to Reserve Patrolman R-two, step four, base rate twenty-eighty-eight, this is a length of service increase.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And Stephanie Brum, um, full-time signal operator, communications, seventeen twenty-four, to full-time signal operator, communications, eighteen oh four, this is a length of service increase.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion made and seconded, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Here comes the dune one, you got some others to add on here?
Charles Sullivan.
Here it comes, Charlie.
Yep, for Bristol County Advisory Board Delegate, term expires June thirtieth, two thousand seventeen. Economic Development Committee, June thirtieth, two thousand seventeen. Health Insurance Advisory Committee, June thirtieth, two thousand seventeen. Local Emergency Planning Committee, June twentieth, two thousand seventeen. Sexual Harassment Officer, June thirtieth, two thousand seventeen. Soil Board, June thirtieth, two thousand seventeen. Certa Board Representative, June thirtieth, two thousand seventeen. And Taxation Relief Committee, term almost expires June thirtieth, two thousand seventeen.
Make a motion to approve, and what's an added committees? Just kidding.
I'll second that. I have a made, a motion made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. You might want to abstain from that one since it's due. All right. What else do we have here?
Do you have reappoint Jack Healy, Paul Dunn?
Yeah, I'm trying to get.
What's on the one?
Yeah, it's one of those that gets scanned sideways. Okay. And appointments, appointment position Tax Increment Financing Board, Jack Healy, April thirtieth, two thousand eighteen. Do we want to do that? Since he will no longer be employed by the town? So, why don't we go to June twenty-second, two thousand seventeen? So, that'll be Tax, um, Tax Increment Financing Board of Jack Healy, June twenty-second, two thousand seventeen. Tax Increment Financing Board, Paul Dunn, April thirtieth, two thousand eighteen. Tax Increment Financing Board, Sheila Scaduto, April thirtieth, two thousand eighteen. Tax Increment Financing Board, Lisa Pacheco, June, uh, April thirtieth, two thousand eighteen. Tax Increment Financing Board, Kevin Dismaris, April thirtieth, two thousand eighteen. And finally, Tax Increment Financing Board, Jessica Thomas, April thirtieth, two thousand eighteen.
Make a motion to approve.
Second. Motion made and seconded, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Lisa Podolsky, Animal Control Officer, term expires April thirtieth, two thousand eighteen.
Oh, make a motion to approve, sorry.
Motion made and seconded, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Robert Klevakup, he's of East Rite Town, Veterans Agent, term expires April thirtieth, two thousand eighteen, and Veterans Grave Officer, term expires April thirtieth, two thousand eighteen.
Make a motion.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Can I, play of order?
Yes.
Can I have a little discussion on appointments in general, since we were talking about appointments? This one, this one.
Sure.
We, it seems to me that we reappoint, that we appoint people annually that we do not need to do so. One, uh, one of it is firefighters, we don't actually appoint firefighters.
No, the chief appoints them.
And they, they, under the law, are there upon good behavior, so to speak. That you, uh, he, he's the appointing officer, probably, but, but every, every year, it seems that Jackie, the appoint, hasn't filled out the form, you know, re-swears, and then, I don't think we need to do that. And there's some other positions I'd like to look into. I don't think we need to make all the, every appointment annually. Yeah, I'd just like to look into that, I don't know what your feelings might be.
You can certainly look into it and bring something back to the board if you feel like you can do something better, always go improvement things.
I, I think it's like this thing where we've always done it.
I'm not really sure.
Yeah, you'd have to see statute, because Jackie is convinced that she has to swear it. Even the police officers, she has to swear that, even though they're.
So, do you wanna look into it? Be my guest.
Okay, so, back to the motion, are you voting yea, nay, or abstaining from the motion on Robert Klevakup?
I'm going yea.
So, I have two ayes, and I will also aye, so it's unanimous. And that is, concludes the business for the Personnel Board.
Anything by the Board of Health?
No.
All right, I'll make a motion to.
You're looking for a motion to adjourn?
Yeah.
I will make that motion afterwards.
All right.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.